For the January 28th Council meeting, the first up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Alder Radifara.
Yeah.
Alder Barr.
Here.
Alder Clouter.
Here.
Alder Crowsey.
Here.
Alder Rice.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Here.
Alder Schroeder.
Here.
Alder Scott.
Here.
Alder Strassman.
Here.
You have a call.
All right, thank you. All right, we've got a lot of people want to speak on various items tonight. Just a reminder that we ask people to speak in three minutes or less on those items. First up is public appearances for non-agenda items. I have a couple. First up is Sean Burke, please. Yeah, yep, yeah, right at the mic here, it'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Marsh, members of the council, I'd like to say thank you, first of all, for your time. I'm actually here representing my sister, who's a resident here in Fitchburg. She actually lives in Alder Clouter and Alder Rice's district up on Osmondson and Lacy. There are some issues with the residents that she lives in that require attention by the building inspection unit. In December, she contacted the department with concerns about fire smoke detectors that weren't up to code. And that issue was resolved, but there were other issues that have developed. And we've tried to bring those to the attention of the building people. One of which resulted in an urgency that was never addressed. On January 10th, when the temperature was approximately nine degrees out, my sister's heat went out. Attempts were made to contact the landlord, and it was unsuccessful. We desperately tried to call anyone we could get to at the city to try to help, at least get ahold of him, to get somebody in there to fix it immediately. And we got nobody. Nobody returned calls, nobody did anything. We ended up having to pay for, out of our pocket, to have it fixed because nobody would take care of this and make him responsible for it. We've also identified a large hole, approximately the size, a little larger than a pie tin, in the sink underneath that has mold growing in it. It's literally a hole in the cabinetry to the floor. The floor is rotting away, there's mold growing from that. As a result, the cabinets are starting to collapse on themselves and pull away from the walls. She has gaps in her garage door, sorry, my brain stopped, that are allowing snow to come in. And in the summertime and fall, that will also allow mice and other rodents to come in there. And that's still not being addressed by the landlord or the building people at all. Several people were emailed photographs showing the extent of the damage, and that was over two and a half weeks ago, and we've heard nothing. It's reached a point where we've had to go outside the city because we're getting just no response from the city. Dane County Environmental Health has had to step in, and are going to be doing a walk through because of some of the overall health concerns that they have. I understand that there are budget issues regarding the building inspection unit.
If you could wrap up, that'd be great, Sean, thank you.
I just would like to know when I can expect to hear back from someone. I've left a message for you, Mr. Mayor, two weeks ago. I haven't heard from you. Mr. Marsh abruptly hung up on me when he found out people were lying to him.
Thank you, Sean.
Well, I'm just wondering, could, actually, that was actually a question, when can I expect to hear back from someone?
This communication right here is meant for you to talk to us, vet your concerns, and then what we'll do is we'll follow up with you at another time after this meeting. It's not supposed to be a back and forth discussion.
I'm sorry, I've been waiting three weeks, so...
Yeah.
And the house is still cold, and the furnace is about to go again, so it's kind of an urgent thing.
Yep. Contact me again, and I'll follow up.
Will you honestly return a call, though?
Thank you, Sean. I have Jay Hockmuth next.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to present some very brief remarks tonight. I've handed out copies of what I've wanted to present to the council, but I'll keep, my remarks will be much shorter than what I've handed out. My name is Jay Hockmuth, I live on Osmondson Road in Seminole Forest, and I've been kind of following the update to the comp plan, and I want to thank staff for everything they've done to get the process to this point. We're on the verge of really being able to declare victory in a month and a half or so on this. And I just have a few comments I want to offer tonight about a very fundamental, probably one of the most important steps in the process, which will be the release of the draft plan for the purposes of a public hearing at the council meeting on March 10th. And I'm really hoping tonight to be able to share a perspective that that plan, when it's published on the city's website on or about February 4th, I'm really hoping that that plan has two alternatives for the language on page 5-3, dealing with the issue of whether the council should have the final say on the content and need for comp plan amendments. The Plan Commission last week recommended language that are different than what's in the resolution the council adopted in December. And I'm just hoping that for process purposes and for maximizing public opportunity for comment, that both the Plan Commission version of the language and the resolution adopted in December, both versions are in the plan. The other thing I'd like to just offer tonight briefly is a hope that the comments that were submitted on the January 21st draft and the comments that are submitted on the March 10th draft, all of those comments will eventually be responded to by staff in an orderly fashion. I realize there'll be a lot of duplication and so on, but there is a way to do this efficiently, and to the extent possible, the council have access to that. Those staff recommended responses on March 10th, when the council considers whether they have enough information to adopt the plan at that meeting, or have to refer it back for further evaluation. And so that's all my remarks tonight, and this is more detail in here, but thank you very much for giving me a few minutes this evening.
Thank you, Jay. All right, that's all I have for non-agenda items. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there anything, anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda?
Could I make an addition?
Sure.
For 5B, Resolution R. 24-20, could we send that also to Public Safety?
Oh, sure. We can friendly that to also refer to Public Safety. All right, anything else? All right, is there, all in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Any opposed, name. All right, that is approved. Anyone want to make any changes to the agenda quick before we get to Administrator's Report, Tom?
It's reference, just looking for it here, I believe it's eight. It has to do with the short-term rentals, I believe it's E...
Yeah.
I see it here, I don't know if it's under seven or eight, but it's number E. 20-0-4 and R. 14-20. Could we move those up for the public due to the fact the number of people are here that wish to talk on it instead of waiting until the end of the meeting? That's all.
Yeah, if I could, I'll move it up to when Valerie gets here, she'll be here about 8:15, if that's all right. So we'll move it up, about 8:15. So it won't be 9 o'clock, or 9:30, or 10, hopefully we're not here that late, but...
No, sir.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Anybody that's, anybody that's here, anybody that's home watching knows around 8:15 or when she arrives, move it, move it.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of people that have weighed in on that, want to weigh on that one, so, yeah, I can move that up when Valerie gets here. So moving along, unless there's anything else, I'll go to Administrator's Report, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to report on a few items, one of which I'd like to congratulate our Public Works staff for the great job they've done during the recent snowfalls. I got several calls from the public in regards to what a great job our Public Works Department does clearing the roads compared to some of our neighbors. And so that's always nice to hear, and the compliments don't always get to your ears, so I wanted to let you know about that. The second item is, I'd like to let the council and the mayor know, the mayor already knows, but we did have 88 single-family housing units that were under permit, at least, many of them completed during 2019. Another good year, following a year where we had over 120. So, the single-family homes continue to grow as does our other residential housing components. We believe that this year coming up, 2020, will be that, and probably even better, given the new subdivision Taravessa out on our east side, and I believe they've sold in excess of 60 lots to date. So, we continue to grow, there are a lot of projects being reviewed at the staff level currently, and you see a lot of projects in the ground. The projects in the ground you see are very high value, especially when you look at the properties in close proximity to Sub-Zero. But there's a lot more to come, and I think the completion of Fish Hatchery Road beginning this year will go a long way towards a lot of our economic development goals, so that's all I had for you.
Great. Moving along, first we have Plan Commission. All three of these we actually postponed, so if, Tom, you want to make a motion postponing these one at a time, that'd be great, I can explain quick why after you make your motion.
Yeah, the first one is Certified Survey Map Request, it's CS. 2330-20. Request by Paul Maxwell, agent for Helen Purcell, for approval of a Certified Survey Map to divide property along Adams Road. The lot number is four, CSM is 10315 into two lots. I move the postpone.
Is there a second? Sorry, Madan, do you want to speak to it, you want me to?
I'll take the first two, you can have the last one.
All right.
What happened, this also went to Agon Rule Affairs, these first two, and where the house was placed, they didn't like it, and Agon Rule Affairs did not want to deny the applicant, so they asked him to come back in a couple of weeks. So they may move it one way or the other, but to make it also, I think, correspond with our ordinance, at the same time, I thought it was a good move that they did just say no to this individual. And that's going along with these first two, so they postponed it, and then it came to the Plan Commission, and we also postponed it.
Yep. Any questions before we vote? All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 Any opposed, name? All right, go ahead, Tom.
Second one is rezone request, it's similar. RC. 2331-20, request by Paul Maxwell, is an agent for Helen Purcell, to rezone a portion of property along Adams Road. Lot four, CSM 10315, from exclusive agricultural district to rural residential district. I'll move postponement.
Is there a second? All right, same by Julian. Any questions? All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? All right, that is postponed, all right, one more.
The last one on the Plan Commission was Resolution 236-19, a resolution endorsing the city's request to amend the urban service area for the Fahy property in the McGaw Park. This was postponed from our January 14th meeting, and the mayor would like to talk about it.
Are you going to move into postpone?
I move postpone.
Is there a second? All right, same by Ann. Pat, I'll let you explain it quick. We postponed it, I know, a couple of weeks ago, and we're postponing it again.
Yeah, there are still some technical issues that need to be resolved with our Public Works Department when it comes to sewer capacity and flow. So, staff has made the recommendation, and obviously, the council has made the motion to postpone, and we support that.
All right, all in favor of postponing, say aye.
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 Any opposed, name? All right, that is postponed as well. Anything else on Plan Commission? There's a lot of stuff we did that is further on in the agenda or things.
Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait, nothing special.
All right, Public Works, Dan, do you want to, or Ann, or someone? Want to do these?
I will make a motion to approve the Second Amendment to the agreement for subdivision improvements in the plot of Taravessa, which was postponed from the January 14th Public Works meeting, or, sorry, from the council meeting on the 14th.
Is there a second? All right, did Public Works approve?
They did, last night.
Did Finance approve?
Did.
All right, you want to explain this one?
So, and I took some notes on each one that we took up last night. There were cracks in the storm sewer, abnormal number of large cracks. City is also installing a signalized intersection on Lacy and MM, which is the reason for the resolution.
All right, anything you want to add, Pat?
Yeah, we have Mike here, in case there's additional questions, but basically, what we're doing, due to the, some of the cracks in the sewers, we're requiring additional insurance from the developer on that product, so this basically covers the city in case there are some issues that pop up.
Any questions at all? Yeah, Julian?
Who is paying for all of these repairs?
Well, there's not repairs that are anticipated...
Yeah.
...currently, but if there were repairs, it would fall back on the developer and/or their insurance company.
And the county is paying for the lights?
The county's paying 50% of the lights, and city's paying 25%, and the developers paying 25%.
Anything else? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? All right, that is approved, next.
Motion to approve Resolution R. 200-19, resolution to join the Green Tier Clear Waters Initiative.
All right, and did you approve in Public Works?
Did, yes.
Did RCC approve?
Yes.
All right, Mike, maybe it looks like, is going to explain this one for us?
Go ahead.
This one went to Public Works quite a while ago, so this is an organization that's trying to improve the stormwater quality and reduce stormwater pollutants in the runoff. Right now, it's us, the city of Madison, Dane County, and then for contractors, Veridian and Hamburg. There's no cost to the city, it's kind of a voluntary program, but what they do is, we cannot issue citations, but anybody that's in the program has only 24 hours to correct any violations, and if not, they can be removed from the organization. And the organization is really proactive to try to come up with new and innovative ways to try to manage stormwater on disturbed sites. And one of the things they came up with, the new framed inlet protection, that I think everybody's utilizing now, that is keeping pollutants out of our stormwater, so it's something we've attended the meetings, we just haven't officially belonged, so now we're officially joining.
Great, questions at all? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved, next up.
I'll make a resolution to approve Resolution R. 11-20, a resolution approving a pumping plant, plan for a ditch in Hillside Heights, the subdivision Hillside Heights.
Is there a second? Same by Ann, did you approve?
We did.
All right, and...
So, you've got a ditch that's located in a very low area, and so it needs to be pumped. The pump, the pump itself is in the CIP, plan's not in CIP, but we have severe weather events, and so with the presence of severe weather events, sometimes a pumping plan and the pump are necessary, and the ditch needs to be cleared out.
I mean, this is a property we've had a lot of issues with in the past, and heard a lot from the neighbors, and so it's really putting it in place, something, really, if something happens, if we have a lot of water, you know, how do we immediately get on top of that? If there's any issues, making sure that we have that set up and ready to go. Julian?
Yes, I also know if this pump is going to be a permanent pump in that site, or it's going to be, you know...
It's a mobile pump that we can use for other pumping if we need to, so if we have other pumping operations, which we intend to use it for, it would be, it'd be trailer-mounted, so we'd move it in and move it out, it would not stay permanently.
And how much does it cost?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
How much is?
I think the capital plan is like 100 or 105,000 for the pumping and all the piping and equipment with it.
Trailer, all that stuff?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have another question. What is the life of this type of pump?
The life, it's really going to depend on the usage.
Okay.
I think our usage is going to be minimal, so I see it, you know, at least 25 years or more, because we're going to use this thing probably, I hope, unless we have a lot of really severe rain events, you know, I'm hoping maybe, you know, five to 10 times a year. But we need, the problem, and why we need the pump, is when there's flooding, everybody's renting, so they're not available when you need them, so we have to have it there when it's an emergency.
I know another place is the cattle over in Seminole that had some flooding issues as well, I'd be another place we could use this.
Yeah, Sub-Zero, that pond, if it became an issue, we could utilize it there as well.
Other questions at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, that is approved, next up, Dan.
A resolution approving, approving R. 13-20, this is a resolution authorizing a cost-sharing agreement with the city of Madison for the reconstruction of North Fish Hatchery Road.
All right, and did Public Works approve?
They did.
Did Finance approve?
We did.
All right, good, you want to explain this?
I can explain it, 25% of the Greenway Cross intersection is located in the city of Madison, thus, it's in the city of Madison, we'd like them to contribute to our redevelopment and reconstruction of the North Fish Hatchery Road corridor. This, if approved, would garner from the city of Madison towards the project $572,000.
Do you want to add to it, looks like you might want to?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add is, in addition to that intersection and the approach to the belt line where you, that basically, that block is in Madison, there is some utility work, Madison Water Utility, that runs along the corridor that would be part of this project.
I want to say thanks to staff, I think originally, the city of Madison was a little hesitant to contribute anything, but they got them to pony up, I know some of us up here, like, hearing that, that other people are paying their fair share.
Yes.
Any questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? All right, that's approved.
Motion to approve Resolution R. 16-20, a resolution authorizing the 2020 through 24 man swap intergovernmental agreement.
All right, and did you approve in Public Works?
We did.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
Finance approved, all right, what's this one, Dan?
So, this is a joint multi-community stormwater discharge permit. This is a reapproval of a current permit that exists for a five-year, on a five-year basis, for a five-year reapproval. Currently, there's costs associated with this, Fitchburg does pay 9% of the cost of the, along with the many other communities that participate, and the cost is based on the population of our city in comparison to the other participants.
All right, any questions at all on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? All right, moving along, Dan.
Resolution to approve requirements for a new city mandated stormwater facility, facilities.
All right, did Public Works approve?
We did.
All right, what's this one about?
So, essentially, it relates to how we deal with our stormwater facilities for consistency for city stormwater, clarifies what expectations are, trying to avoid underground storage, comply with DNR best practices, and ensure such facilities are accessible for the staff who inspect them.
Anything you want to add, Mike?
And maintain them, it's just so that we have reasonable access to be able to maintain them, and we don't want something, you know, that's expensive to develop, it's also expensive to maintain, so we're trying to limit those facilities and mitigate our expenses in the future.
Good, questions for this one? Yeah, Julian?
Yeah, I have a question related to the private, how we are going to apply the same, how we are going to inspect those?
The private facilities, we have an ordinance, and I think it already passed, that they have to do their own inspections by an engineer and submit those to us, so those are a separate, a separate agreement, but they're required as part of their permit application to annually give inspections and give us that report. And then there's a mechanism, if they don't, we can do it and bill them back.
Okay, so we can do that for them?
Correct.
Other questions at all? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, name? All right, that's approved too, next up, Dan.
And we have a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the town of Verona to complete a study of Goose Lake, located to the, I believe, west of Fitchburg Road.
All right, did Public Works approve?
We did.
Did Finance approve? All right, you want to explain this one?
So, we're going to do a study because there's flooding issues related to this lake, and also affects, the lake is in the town of Verona, the flooding does occur in the city of Fitchburg, and so we're doing a joint study with the town to study how we might mitigate that flooding.
Yeah, I know it was a big problem in Fitch Road, people can't get through there then, they're not very happy about that. Anything you want to add, Mike?
It's, we originally thought that we were going to have a grant, and we didn't, so there's a budget amendment, so it does require a two-thirds vote, so just to make that, make you aware of that.
Yeah, if it's not unanimous, then we'll do a roll call, I think it might be unanimous, so. More questions, though? I don't want to stifle debate here, questions at all? All right.
Oh, I have a question, what is the timeframe for this?
We would send out the RFP probably shortly after this approval, I've got to see, I'm not sure if the town of Verona has approved it as well already, so we need both governmental bodies to approve the intergovernmental agreement, then we'll send out the RFP in the next two to three weeks, probably.
Okay, and then how long it take to do the study?
Probably, a little bit, that's going to be on the regulatory agency's, you know, schedule, so I think it'll be fall before we have the study back.
More questions at all? All right, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, that proves you nationally, which is good, that's why we need a two-thirds vote. All right, next up is number eight.
A motion to approve ordinance 202006, is a responsible bidder ordinance.
Did Public Works approve?
They did.
All right, do you want to explain this one?
Sure, so this is a more of a complex issue, but there's a series of components related to how we do our bids on public works projects in the city, and it's a responsible bidder ordinance, and some of those components relate to registering with the Department of Administration, and also other various criteria to ensure that contractors are up to code, and that they're in compliance with reasonable standards that we have set within this ordinance. It's something that I've worked on with the mayor, with Public Works Department, also the International Union of Carpenters, the operating engineers, I've been working on it for months, I think we started working on it back in September or October, and so it's been ongoing, we've had ongoing discussions, I think we're trying to thread the needle on it, I know there are components of this, and I'll have an amendment that I'll be introducing shortly, and we can discuss that, and I'm certainly open to suggestions from the body on that, but, and I think, you know, Mike is going to discuss it as well, and you'll hear from some individuals from the carpenters' union who are here, and I'm going to discuss the benefits of it, but that's basically what it is per se, essentially setting standards, and I think adding integrity to our public works projects is the goal of the ordinance. Several communities around the state have similar ordinances, including but not limited to Brown County, Sun Prairie, Blue Mounds, and many, many others around the state. More conservative, more progressive communities have done this, it's sort of non-ideological across the board, but we think we have crafted a good policy, and so that's where we're at.
All right, I've got a couple of citizen, people comment forums here at turns, we'll go through these, Andrew Dish and Tristan Greer want to speak, so if you guys want to come up to the microphone and tell us what you got, that'd be great.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrew Dish, joined by Tristan Greer, I'll kick it off, I'll hand it over to Tristan. We hope that this body supports the responsible, responsible bidder ordinance. This ordinance is about flexibility, options, and allowing local bodies to exercise their discretion. It's also about protecting the integrity of public works projects and protecting taxpayers. Generally, public construction projects must be competitively bid and awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. However, Wisconsin statutes and case law provide very little guidance on what constitutes the word responsible. As a result, many public bodies are reluctant to award work to anyone other than the lowest bidder, even if there's good reason to believe the low bidder may end up costing taxpayers more in the long run due to poor work quality, project delays, safety hazards, and change orders. While low cost is the first priority, no doubt about it, value is also essential. You get what you pay for, everyone knows that. This ordinance is not triggered unless a public works contract exceeds $250,000, so these are for the big projects. the big projects. Where it has to be done on time, on budget, and right the first time. Most of the criteria is proposed, that is proposed, requires a bidder to confirm that they are in compliance with current law. Employment, labor, uh, laws, OSHA, safety standard violations, uh, unemployment and workers' compensation requirements. If a contractor skirts the law, they shouldn't be rewarded with a competitive advantage to win a bid. It's really that simple. You'll hear, um, some, uh, unsubstantiated claims by the Public Works Director that it may, uh, decrease the amount of contractors bidding on public projects here, but that's just conjecture. In fact, um, you will read, Eric, Mayor Richardson, uh, local contractor, Tri-North Builders, actually supports this ordinance. So, the contractors themselves that have weighed in support this, they don't oppose it. Um, it will not, uh, diminish the amount of, of bidders, and, and that's simply just speculation. Similar ordinances have been adopted around the state, including the City of Superior, and more locally last month, uh, in Blue Mounds, Wisconsin. It's also passed unanimously in Brown County, uh, so it's been hardly controversial. It passed the Public Works Committee last night with all their bars amendment four to zero. I also want to speak to the amendment that was approved last night. It's an apprenticeship provision. Apprenticeship is a gold standard. It's in the best interest of the city to include this, and it will only apply to contracts that exceed five hundred thousand dollars. So, again, big projects that are complex in nature and requires that workers actually know what they're doing and make sure that the job is done safely. So, on the topic of apprenticeship, um, I want to introduce Tristan Greer, who is actually a current apprentice in the carpenters' training program, to talk about his apprenticeship experience.
Uh, yeah, good evening. Uh, my name Tristan Greer, and I'm a first-year, uh, carpenter in an apprenticeship program, and it's a skills trade, and to me, what makes it the skills trade is this apprenticeship. We're getting all that knowledge that I haven't known prior to becoming a, an apprentice, to joining the union and becoming an apprentice, and, um, yeah. Safety, as I always speak of, is first and foremost, foremost, excuse me. I work with London, we build bridges. Um, I apologize for the Verona project taking so long to get completed. But, again, you get what you pay for. It's gonna be speedy and, and not right, or it's gonna be right and take its time, and we took our time out there, we got it done, you know. I came on a back end of it, but I, I still apologize to those that I come in contact with, but, um, with, besides safety, um, um, respect on a job site, I've taken classes on that. Now, it's not just on a job site, I have respect outside of that. Things I've learned, um, in a, in apprenticeship, I live outside the job site. My mother, whomever, called me up, need this done. Yeah, I can do it now because I know how to do it, and it's not just gonna fall off, you know what I mean? So, the apprenticeship program, to me, I think it's a close, it's a gap growing because there's not a lot of, uh, trade, trade-oriented people out there because we don't have the know-how. This, to me, is a life-changing experience. I'm on Facebook a lot. I tell everyone about joining the union and becoming a skills person because it's a life-changing experience, so, that's me.
Thank you. What I heard is, once you started in Verona Road, it finally got done.
I'm here, just don't bite my head off. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. I also have, uh, a form here from Patrick Stern, who lives in Fitchburg, registering in support, and has some comments. Uh, best value contracting will provide the city with better value, schedule outcomes, and ability to reject bids from underqualified firms and large projects. This protects residents from additional risks from cost and schedule overruns. Additionally, it will help to leave the, it will help to leave the construction industry in better shape in the long run. By having apprenticeships, uh, required, it allows the industry to continue growing its workforce that Fitchburg will continue to have positive construction outcomes for years to come. Alright, uh, I don't know if, Mike, you wanna add anything?
I just want to speak to, you know, I drafted the original ordinance without the amendment, so it's clear that I'm in favor of that. I don't think that that, I vetted that very carefully with contractors, that it would not have a negative impact. I agree, I can't tell you for sure that the apprenticeship portion would or would not. I'm just very concerned because we have a very tight bidding market right now, and so I don't know the answer, and I'm being totally forthright with that. I don't know what the impact might be, but we have a very narrow margin with our bidding projects right now. We, we've struggled to get a lot of bids, and prices have escalated, so that's my concern. Um, without the amendment, I vetted that very carefully. I think that has no impact, and it provides great protection to the City of Fitchburg.
Alright, comments at all? Discussion?
So, just, just a couple of things. First off, thanks to Mike for, for working with Aaron and I on, on the proposal. Um, and just a couple of thoughts on the responsible bidder ordinance concept in general. A few things. If you go back to the situation out in Sun Prairie, you remember about a year and a half ago, there was an explosion, um, and one of the, the outcomes of that very tragic situation was that, um, Sun Prairie said, my goodness, we had a contractor who was not registered with the Department of Administration, not registered with the state. Um, they did not have any standards, apprenticeship standards, training standards, anything like that, um, and so, for that reason, they developed a very aggressive RBO, Responsible Bitter Ordinance, okay? The, the, the policy we've developed, and I think that was sort of in response to a tragic situation in Sun Prairie. The one that we in Public Works have been, been working on, and that I've been working on with contractors, with the trades, with the mayor, with the department, um, is, is much more, much, much, much more of a moderate proposal that I think serves the interest of the city and our residents, and adds integrity to our public works projects. And, and further, any project as it currently stands, under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, would not be subject to the responsible bidder ordinances and all its requirements. Further, our goal is to try to capture the biggest projects and most complex projects in the city. Why, you might ask? Well, um, if you have a very simple project, someone building a shed, someone, um, building a garage, um, something that we can do that's a niche, that's a mom-and-pop type job, we still want to have those jobs available for smaller contractors, um, and, and I would say that the, some of the technical and training and safety needs of those projects are not quite as rigorous as would otherwise be required or be necessary, in my view, for a bigger, more complex project. And so that's the reason why we're looking at thresholds, and we're trying to thread the needle, um, because obviously, as those of you who know me know that I'm concerned about cost, um, we want to try to have projects, we want competitive bids whenever we can get them. Um, and so, we don't want to lose bidders. When you do get into the bigger projects, however, typically, if you're a reputable firm, union or non-union, and this does not exclude non-union contractors, it's not a union versus non-union issue, um, but typically, typically, what you're going to find is that they do have, for the big projects, they do have training programs that are accredited by the state, and the equivalent of what's known as an apprenticeship. And so, that's what I'm gonna get into is some apprenticeship language. Um, and I would say, I think it's common sense, if we're gonna spend thousands upon thousands or millions of dollars on projects in the city, very large, very complex projects, it makes sense that there's a certain criteria or level of training, um, that the state recognizes that, that we ought to require within reason for projects that are large, and you'll have to decide on what that threshold is. Um, you know, Public Works had set two hundred, or sorry, for, for the apprenticeship component of this, Public Works set five hundred thousand dollars as that threshold. However, um, you can, we'll have a debate, a discussion about that, how, how high you want to go. I had talked to Mike today, and we talked about, maybe he's more comfortable with a higher number. He's not crazy about the whole apprenticeship. He likes the apprenticeship idea, but he's nervous about the concept, which I can, I respect his opinion on that. Um, but what I'd say is, I think, I do think we should ought to have some, some standards for the larger, most complex projects in the, in the city when it comes to workplace standards, training, safety, things like that. I've had the opportunity, I did do a tour with, uh, some of the apprenticeship, with some of the apprentices, um, out on the far northwest side, um, and what I found is that a lot of them are getting traded, trained on safety and, and various heavy equipment operations, things like that. I think it's very important, and, and I'd also comment, if you're on these complex projects, you know, like a Fish Hatchery Road, or, or maybe Verona Road, which the city didn't do, but it's still a public project, you're operating heavy equipment. You have situations where sewer and water lines are being installed. And when that's going on, critical moments can come up when you might need some training. You might need to understand what's going on and be able to react quickly. Um, you know, one, as a matter of fact, there was a gentleman, his name was Cody, he explained to me about a situation where the, they were digging, they were putting in some sewer line, and the sand was caving in, and he had to react quickly and know exactly what to do, and that, of course, involves extensive training. That's why I like the apprenticeship and/or training concept equivalent too. And so that's why I'll be pro- proposing an amendment. We had inserted some language, given it to Public, Public Works. It was introduced without that language. I'd like to see it back in, but we can discuss that some more here as we go.
Further questions, comments at all?
So, just as a matter of housekeeping, if we take a look at what's before us in ordinance twenty twenty oh six, what would a yes vote mean?
So, sorry, what's that?
What would a yes vote mean? What would the outcome of that be?
Well, we would pass, um, the, the responsible bidder language that's before you in the packet, in the current packet. And I'm gonna have an amendment to add some apprenticeship language. I think the question before the body that you'll have to, we'll probably get into debating and, and decide, will be the threshold. How, what, how, you know, how expensive of a project, or how big of a project would the apprenticeship component apply, if any at all, should you choose to, to do that? What would your threshold be? Public Works had set at five hundred thousand dollars. The current language in your packet, for the rest of, of the proposal, is at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, but then we have, so we had two different thresholds in the Public Works-approved RBO, Responsible Bitter Ordinance. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the non-apprenticeship language, and five hundred thousand dollars for projects, five hundred thousand dollars or more for the, uh, projects that would apply to an apprenticeship. Does that make sense?
And I think the biggest thing is, we, you know, we kind of do this right now, but it's really kind of fine that when we have these big projects, that the companies that are bidding on these that we select have the quality standards that we require. And so that if someone doesn't come in, low bid the thing, but they're almost a fly-by-night or something like that, and they're done, they're gone, and all of a sudden, we don't have the quality that we need and want. Um, yeah, Mike?
So, one thing that I, in talking to Misty, I think she'd like to see those thresholds be the same, just from an implementation standpoint, so we don't have a certain dollar threshold for certain requirements and a different dollar threshold. So, going forward, if we're gonna do that, I think that would really make it a lot easier to administer, so it's just something to, to think before you debate the issue.
Yeah. Julia, do you have a further question?
As we, as we take these projects out into the market, what are we seeing as far as response in general? I mean, I know we've got a number of major projects, and I know that, to some extent, the farther out, the more likely it is that we're gonna see a better turnout, but generally speaking, how is that whole outcome looking as far as, are we getting the number of bids we wanted? Are we within budget? How's that landscape looking?
Well, on, on the, on the big project, the Fish Hatchery Road project, I think we got an acceptable number of bids. However, I think a lot of those contractors were very busy, and so that reflected in the price. Um, on our smaller projects that we're, we're really struggling, um, the Burn Pond Project, we bid three times and, and, uh, only getting one bidder each time, and, and it's been very high, so we rejected it all the time. I, I, I foresee, it looks like next year's gonna be busier than the past year as far as development, so that's my concern, is I, I just think there's, there's a lot coming down the pike, so, so it's, it's really hard to forecast, so, to be honest.
Mike, I don't know if it would help, uh, do you have any kind of, uh, this, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project is roughly this, a half million dollar project is roughly this?
To be honest, I set that threshold very low to, to, for your comfort level. I, I prefer it to be up a little because the Burn project, we anticipated to be about two hundred and fifty thousand. I think our bid was like four hundred. Um, and that's a, that's just retrofitting an existing pond, so unfortunately, you, you know, there's, you don't get much for that anymore. It seems like a lot, but, uh, you know, I, I think most of our projects are gonna be, any project you're gonna call substantial is gonna be over a million dollars at this point in time.
Dan?
So, I'm gonna introduce my amendment. Um, so, and, and I'll just read it to you, and I also just want you all to know that I have emailed it now to the entire council. I wanted to do that after the meeting started to avoid a walking quorum, okay? So, I will make a motion to insert the following language as follows, to be inserted in section one V three. This would require renumbering items three through sixteen, three sixteen and four seventeen, okay? So, and the language would read as follows. This is what we passed in Public Works in terms of the apprenticeship component of this responsible bidder ordinance. So, for any contractor bidding on any project with a construction cost estimate of five hundred thousand dollars or more, the contractor shall participate in a State of Wisconsin-approved apprenticeship program or have a written alternative training program sufficient to ensure that its employees may safely perform work required by the Public Works contract. That's my amendment.
Same for Julia, for just, okay. And any further discussion? Otherwise, I know Julia wants to speak, I can go to her.
Well, so what I'm gonna say is, just, we set this five hundred thousand dollar threshold. Again, um, there's a couple of thoughts. So, the rest of the RBO is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold, this is five hundred thousand dollars. We can have a discussion about going higher than that if, if there are some who are uncomfortable, we're open to that. Um, the second thing with that, I would say, is, um, we could also set the entire RBO at one number, one threshold, as Misty and Mike have suggested. So, I think that's sort of where we're at, in, in terms of, of my amendment, in terms of the RBO which we've crafted. And I'm curious to hear the thoughts of other members. It's sort of a complex issue, but we're trying to set standards. Um, and, and just to speak on behalf of my amendment, and I know that there, there may be some, some different opinions on this. The State of Wisconsin does allow its municipalities, it gives us leeway, does not preempt us from setting these sort of standards. Most cities do, do something. Um, and so, just like when you are a school, you can set various curriculum standards, um, you know, you wouldn't have a math teacher that does no math, you wouldn't have, you know, someone who's not certified to do the proper work. And so, again, with very complex projects, um, where I think you have work being done in work zones that are very fast traffic, just a few feet by, or you have situations where heavy equipment is being operated, you have the potential for slope and slumpage and, and caving in of, of, of sediment and dirt where people could be buried alive. These people have to be trained, they have to react quickly, and thus, there is a major training component. This is heavy industry work, these are very skilled labors in most cases. If our city taxpayers are going to spend thousands upon thousands and millions of dollars on these projects, it may, and on the biggest projects, I'm not talking about, and so, that's where I think I'm open to different thresholds, I would say, and I'd like to hear your thoughts. Um, I think it makes sense for us to have some sort of standards at the highest level with the biggest projects. It makes sense. Um, because we're protecting the taxpayers, we're protecting the integrity of the project. We want to avoid a situation like we had out in Sun Prairie where, because there was potentially some subpar work, there was someone who was not certified with the state, um, and it led to a potentially catastrophic situation. We want to avoid that here, and I think we can do that by ensuring that our employees, employees that are working on our projects that taxpayers pay for have the necessary, um, educational, safety, training standards, and so that's the goal.
Alright, uh, Julia?
Uh, okay, thank you, Dan, for all this explanation, clarification.
Thanks for listening.
Um, so, my question was that, uh, when I read the, the ordinance, uh, the first time, uh, before watching Public Works meeting last night, I was concerned with the threshold. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, you know, is nothing, you know what I mean? So, um, so, um, I was happy when they discussing Public Works increasing the threshold to five hundred thousand, but then I, I was a little concerned when we had that you guys had the, uh, you know, also one of the requirements is to have the apprenticeship program, you know, I mean, uh, because five hundred thousand dollars is, is a still, for me, a low threshold, uh, if we are gonna put a requirement like this. Um, and, and that one was one of the, uh, the concern that I had because, um, you know, if I am a middle-sized construction company, um, you know, and I am in my growth stage, you know, and, and you're, and I want to bid project in the City of Fitchburg, I'm gonna be constrained to this very high, uh, requirement, you know what I mean? So, I, I, I know, uh, I, you know, I want to tell you that I, the, the apprenticeship path in the construction industry ensures both high-level training and family-sustaining wages. I believe in that. This is how we are creating the middle class in America. Uh, the Wisconsin, I also did some research and I talked to some, um, experts in construction that, um, Wisconsin is a national leader in apprenticeship, 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 and having the support of the City of Fitchburg to require this program, um, Public Works Award will continue to advance this important pathway for the skilled construction trades. Um, I also talking to the expert, she explained to me that, uh, you know, if we increase the threshold a little bit more, uh, we not exclude, uh, many of any viable bidders. So, that one was another concern that I have is, uh, we are gonna limit competition if we put all these requirements in the, in the, in the ordinance, so our pool of bidder can shrink, and this was an, an increased cost. So, that one was one of the other, um, concern that I have, but discussing with her, she told me if we increased a little bit more the threshold, you know, we are not gonna have that issue. Um, um, so, and the other thing that I like about the amendment is that also, um, mentioned the word alternative. alternative programs, okay? So, and also would recommend including an alternative that allows for participant of a state of Wisconsin-certified pre-apprenticeship program in lieu of an addition registered apprentices. You know what I mean? Can, you know, giving more flexibility to the language. So that one was, well, and the other thing that I, I talked to Mike about that on 1914 of the ordinance, when we asked, the contractor has a record of factually completing at least five projects of similar size and complexity within the last five years. That one is another item that I was concerned, because, you know, what happens if I have three? You know what I mean? So, so I don't know if we can be a little bit more flexible with the language or not, I don't know. I don't know.
All right. I'll go to Shannon, since she has that.
Go ahead, yeah.
You already talked too much.
Just, just to wonder, how many companies would have like an apprentice program that is non-union? Are there, do you, do you know that off the top of your head?
Maybe.
I, I contacted nine, and those that had apprenticeship programs were all union, and, but I've just contacted nine that I know of in the area, so that's not a very big sample, so it's probably not very representative.
So, this is a list of, of entities that have apprenticeship programs across the state. I'll pass it down to you. And I, I can tell you, one is Stevens Construction, which is doing some work here on some of our senior housing up on Fish Atchery Road. They have Stevens University, which is a equivalent apprenticeship program, and, and actually got some information about that when I toured their facility. Some of you have done that tour. I'll pass this down for Shannon to look at, older Shannon. But, you know, and so, I know there's a lot of non-union entities on there. My uncle, Bill Bookner Plumbing, in La Crosse area, on Alaska, Wisconsin, great town, is, has an apprenticeship program. He's non-union. So there's a lot of them on there, you gotta look at them, and if you're familiar with them, you can find out which ones are union and non-union. But, but the state sets requirements or equal requirements to apprenticeship, and then ultimately, you know, whether you're union or not is sort of, you know, it doesn't matter, you either meet the standards or you don't. And by virtue of the amendment brought forth, you know, the, the standards don't speak to unionization or not, they just simply set the standards for safety and training and certification with the Department of Administration. Now, the other thing I'd say is Alder Ratafrada offered up some, some language, which I had no problem with, so if she wants to offer some of that as a friendly amendment, I'll accept that into my amendment as an omnibus, if you want to do that.
Like the friendly, the...
We'll have to go to Tracy to, to incorporate some of that.
Off it's a...
And for the threshold, she mentioned the threshold.
I can send you, okay.
If you want to suggest a threshold, too, I meant 500 for the apprentice language in mine, but...
I don't know what the other council members think about.
Let's have a little more discussion, maybe, and see if people, why don't we end? Yeah, sir?
I like Dan's amendment, and I like Julia's recommended changes, that if we increase this threshold a little bit, it seems more inclusive, that we could potentially have more, avoid the limited bids. And I also like the idea of having it be a little bit more vague in the apprenticeship program, that I think that that's really valuable to have the apprenticeship program, but if that would be, if we could, if you would adopt Julia's recommendation of just being a little bit more vague to include additional options, that seems beneficial to not limit ourselves. And I guess for a threshold, Mike, I would maybe ask you if you would have a recommendation of a specific number, keeping in mind, I know, I liked your recommendation of Misty saying that both numbers should align, that, for implementation, that that makes sense?
I, I thought a million dollars is what I thought for a threshold, if it was, if it was up to me.
That's what we talked about on the phone today, he and I had spoke. Sorry.
Am I calling people to say?
Okay, thank you.
Janelle?
A million dollars is exactly the number I had in mind. You know, this is the market that I live in during the day. I can tell you, these organizations are busy, and getting, we need to get bids. I mean, that's the pressure that I think that we feel. I have all the respect in the world for these programs. As I said, Finance, my son, is in the trades. I understand that these, these are smart guys, they are hard-working guys, they're absolutely gentlemen. The challenge that we've got is, as crazy as it sounds, $400,000 isn't what it used to be in this business. And getting organizations to turn out, I think we're really putting ourselves potentially at risk in not only getting viable options on our bids, but the impact that that's gonna have on our budget in limiting the resources we've got. So I'd like to see it be at a million.
Send it to you, please.
All right. Dan, did you want to add something?
So, I'm gonna resubmit my amendment, she's gonna provide the language.
So are you withdrawing your current amendment?
Withdraw that, yes.
Okay, so that's withdrawn.
Please.
Sorry, Tracy, making things extra complicated for you. We still have the main motion not changed at this point, but it sounds like a new motion's coming.
One second. So, we're gonna make another motion. Okay, we have some technology issues. I might go over by first.
We'll read it out for everybody, just so they understand what you're voting on.
That'll be good, yeah. We want people to know what they're voting on.
No. Nope. Let's just warn you. And Heather, did you send it? Okay, Dan, I sent it.
You did send it. Okay.
So you've got it.
Okay.
So you can read it.
Do you want, yeah, yeah, gotta be able to hear you. I can pull up the Jeopardy music if you want while you're waiting.
Is Mayor gonna whistle the Jeopardy tune?
Anyone else want to speak to anything we discussed while we're waiting for Dan?
I'll, I'll make, so, okay, so Julia and I will offer this. We'll, we'll do the threshold at $1 million based on what I had said before, and I'll read the previous language and then offer up some additional language. The previous language had stated as follows, to be inserted in section 1B3, would require renumbering of item 316 and 417, and my language will state as follows. For any contractor bidding on any project with a construction cost estimate of $1 million or more, the contractor shall participate in a state of Wisconsin-approved apprenticeship program or have written, have a written alternative training program sufficient to ensure that its employees may safely perform the work required by the Public Works contract. In addition to that, we have also recommended language, including that an alternate, an alternate that allows for participants of a state of Wisconsin-certified apprenticeship program in lieu of, or in addition to registered apprentices. That's right. Okay. And I'm gonna send this also to Tracy to be added to the bottom of the paragraph I introduced.
And so that would be a million dollars for all projects, then? Or just for, 'cause I know you had the kind of two things here, but, you know, we heard Misty would like it better if it was the same. Is it both thresholds?
Yeah, we can do that, yes.
I just want to make sure that people know we're voting on.
Okay.
We actually need...
Let's vote on this, and then if there's any additional...
You actually need to make a motion for an amendment, and Julia would have to second.
So, yeah, just...
So I'm motioning the aforementioned, and...
All right, so that's a motion?
I second.
All right, same by Julia, okay. All right, so if I am understanding correctly, it's adding the, also the apprenticeship piece to it, and for both things, it's the same threshold of a million dollars, not, you know, there's 250,000 originally in here, but now it's 1 million. Okay. Want to make sure that hopefully people are following along. All right, Tom?
I think I know the answer to this, but it has to do like, if Cabelas comes to town, or Circo, or someone, they're not restricted to this, they have their own contractors, they have their own people, so that's not really what we're talking here, right?
Public bids.
Yeah, this is public.
Public bid, right?
Public, totally publics.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Jim?
Is this all construction, or is it just buildings?
I think it's all projects.
It would be any public work, it's, there's a definition of a public works, construction project in the state statutes. It would include that. The question came up in Finance about the consultants or the engineers, that, that wouldn't be part of this ordinance.
Or subcontractors.
Or subcontractors, that's correct.
Streets, buildings, those are...
Yeah, street, any, any, any sort of construction activity, this would basically fall into it.
And, and emergency work is exempt? If it was an emergency?
Yep.
All right, Shannon, go ahead.
Well, I'm, my thing, I also have another question, too. There's, there are certain, there are certain jobs where it's kind of like learn-on-the-job, it's not like an apprentice-based, you know, construction? So what would that do for those companies?
Yeah, as long as they have some, from what I've heard, is as long as they have some kind of training program, whether it's an official apprenticeship program or not, and I think that's just kind of saying, 'cause some people, not everyone's a union, I think apprenticeship is associated with unions primarily, but if someone's not union and they have some kind of formalized training program, that would also...
Well, like, I'll just say like a quick example, like say asphalt, it's kind of more of like a learn-on-the-job type of thing, it's not really, unless it's something that, you know, is super major, there's a lot of people that have learned on the job over the years that worked for those big companies and never went through like a, an apprentice program. So I was just wondering if, you know, they, I mean, it's just across the board, everybody.
Sure. Yeah, and I don't know if you want to speak to that, or...
I was just hitting.
Yeah, Mike.
That was it.
Okay.
So I just, so like for, for, just keep in mind that the type of projects we're talking about are over a million dollars, and, and they would have to be in a response to a, an RBO, or a response for bid. Okay, or an RBO, response for, no, RFP, sorry, yeah, request for bid.
A lot of acronyms.
RFP, I can know my, RFP, what's that?
RFP.
Request for bid, yes. So, so it'd be a city project, and, and so, you know, we're not dealing with, you know, if, if someone, if someone like Cabelas is doing work, they're installing a new roof, or, or the Supertarget, or the, that's not, that's not applicable to this, it's a private entity. Now, there are different types of, of training programs with different entities, non-union, there's a lot of non-union entities that certainly do training, and the state sends, sets the standards, a lot of that, those, that training's equivalent to the apprenticeship work, the apprenticeship programs that are out there. I, I mentioned Stevens Construction, 'cause they have their non-union shop that does that, and there are others as well, so. And they also do public works and could respond to the request for proposal, RFP.
Dorothy?
Does this require all the subs for contractors to also?
No.
No, it doesn't apply to the subs.
Does that apply to the subcontractors?
Because they do some pretty dangerous work.
Yeah.
Mike, do you want to speak to?
Yeah, the difficulty with subs, Dorothy, is, is sometimes they're very niche, like they might be a striper as a sub, and you get into very small contracts. And then the other thing is, then we start limiting the prime contractor's ability to switch subs if a scheduling issue is there, because they didn't have that affidavit as part of the bid. And it becomes a little bit, too, of an administration thing, that we have to really monitor all of that. And then, as well, the concern was a little bit for me, that we're putting a lot of onus on the prime contractor when he's bidding, that he's got to get all these affidavits from every sub, and a lot of times, they don't know their sub until, I mean, literally, an hour before the bid, so that, we didn't want to increase that potential for cost as well, so we excluded subs for those, at least that's why, that was my reasoning for excluding subs.
So for all the reasons that we've been stating, it spooks me to say that you have to have, among other things, I had been working in nursing for a number of years, and then I took a training, a, a class, and the teacher says, what would you do in this situation? And I'm like, well, do you want the answer from the book or the one from real life? Because they're totally different. And I would hate to have kids that say, oh yeah, I've got the piece of paper that says I know how to do this, and then he gets out on the job and proves out that ain't the job for him, or whatever. So it worries me to set criteria based on, based strictly on. So I, I would love to have something that might add the words like demonstrates competency, or something that allows for non-formal training, like Shannon is saying, there's just all kinds of people that grew up in various types of jobs, doing all kinds of different work. I, I was in the carpenters' union for a time, by the way, a few years back. But it does worry me to say you have to have paper training, that, without necessarily saying you have to have experience.
I guess, I'm making a way in, but my guess would be that any quality trades apprenticeship program include a lot of hands-on as part of that, it would not just studying a book.
They do, and I would expect if they had a training program, that that would be hands-on training as well. And then also, we do require them to show that they've had, the contractors to show that they've had experience in these, in these types of projects. By listing them now, however, we don't have control of that they can hire someone the day after they start a project, you know, that's, but in general, that's how we're trying to protect it.
I've got non, non-fond memories of what we went through building the Dolly Bike Hub.
Anyone else want to weigh in? All right, so, first we have the amendment piece to it, with the million-dollar threshold and a couple other things in there. So first, we need to vote on the amendment itself. So I'll, I'll try it without roll call first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? All right, and that passes. All right, so now we have the main motion, which has now been changed with that higher threshold. Any further discussion at all? All right, then, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on public works, Dan?
I think that's it.
All right, then, before I do parse commission, I know there's a request to move the Airbnb stuff up, and since Valerie's here now, we'll do that. And I've got, first I need someone to make a motion, let's, I gotta find one. A2F, all right. Would someone like to, it's not under a certain committee or anything like that, if someone would like to read or make a motion, that would be great.
I move a motion to, to move up resolution R-14-20, amended the 2020, oh no, ordinance 2020-0-04, amending chapter 10, article 3, division 4 of the Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances to create a license and regulation framework for short-term renters and creating a penalty for violation thereof.
Second.
All right. Do you, you want me to speak to this, maybe, and where it came from, or?
Yeah, you can tell the story about this, yeah.
Yeah, so, we've heard this from a few people, but I know this past summer, especially, there was a situation where some people bought a house here in Fitchburg and really just rented it out. And they didn't really, I mean, I think they claimed that they lived there, but they weren't there very often, they actually have more than one house in the area that they rent out, and the people in the neighborhood were not happy with that, because essentially a house is being treated like a hotel. And we don't really have anything on our guidelines, there are some county guidelines that we haven't placed, but this is really trying to add another tool to our tool belt, and working with these properties that, you know, are kind of an issue, and being able to have some more teeth to kind of go after, you know, these properties if they're having problems, make sure that we know, it helps to know who they are. I know another piece to this is that they're supposed, Airbnb is supposed to be collecting hotel room tax for these properties, and so, right now, my, our guess is that there's people who live in Fitchburg, because they have Madison address, that our money is going to Madison, so we'll be able to tell Airbnb, hey, we get the money for these properties. So there's that piece to it as well. But I know that there was a lot of residents that were unhappy at that point in time. I've got a lot of comments here, but I don't know, Valerie, you want to add anything to this before I go to citizen comments or not?
I will just add that I passed out a couple of documents, and we'll talk about them in just a moment. I'm sure you have some questions, but that's all.
All right. Why don't I have Laura Olson Dugan come up and speak first?
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I am here to speak in favor of the proposed ordinances on short-term rentals. My name is Laura Olson, and I have been a Pittsburgh resident since two thousand and one. For the past twenty-six years, I've worked as a legal research librarian, and thus, I appreciate the complexities and of the developing and intersecting state, county, and local legal requirements relating to short-term rentals. I applaud the city for its proactive approach in proposing an ordinance designed to balance the needs of various constituents. My purpose for being here tonight is based on my direct experience living immediately adjacent to a short-term rental in the Seminole Forest subdivision. I would like to share with you what my neighbors and I experienced, as well as my observations about the issue at hand. In March twenty nineteen, the home immediately adjacent to mine was purchased by a family owning multiple short-term rentals. They did not use the home as their primary residence. They marketed their home as accommodating up to sixteen guests at a time. Each and every weekend, we dealt with a different group of renters and experienced the same recurring issues on our quiet cul-de-sac. Increased noise, traffic, trash, and a transient feel to our formerly peaceful circle. The cycle quickly became frustrating, exasperating, and completely changed the very character of our neighborhood. We endured five months of large party group weekends, until we were able to exert enough pressure on the homeowners to sell. That was not an easy task. The situation was an emotional drain and impeded our very ability to join our weekends at home. I feel I owe it to other Pittsburgh residents to share my story and forewarn what can happen when short-term rentals are unregulated and unlicensed. In addition to the inconvenience this caused the residents of our circle, the renters, too, were at risk. The home was not initially registered with the county health department, was rented to more people than the home could safely accommodate. The pool and hot tub were not in accordance with county health department guidelines, just to share a few public safety concerns. Some neighborhoods have restrictive covenants that can be modified to prevent short-term rentals. Our neighborhood is in the process of making such changes. This has been a costly and time-consuming process. Not all other neighborhoods have this same option. Calling the police each and every time, a short-term rental situation out of hand, is also not a long-term solution. As such, the city needs a permanent solution to balance the rights of all parties. A short-term rental in a vacation community has a very different impact than a short-term residential, uh, rental facility. Also, homes purchased solely as income properties for short-term rental and not used as a primary residence have a dramatically different neighborhood impact than an owner-occupied home used for occasional short-term rental for supplemental income. Opponents of the proposed ordinance suggest that the city of Pittsburgh does not need another layer of regulation. Laws and regulations are designed to address societal changes, including new and evolving business models, such as short-term rentals. Based on my personal experience with an adjacent short-term rental, I urge the city to enact local ordinances to protect all impacted constituents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor Richardson, I also have comments from a neighborhood, the president of the Seminole Neighborhood Association. I know he submitted those.
Yep, I have that, I'll read it.
Terrific, thank you.
All right, I have Dan Johnson next.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll be brief in my comments. I think Ms. Olson covered much of the topics here. My name is Dan Johnson. I am adjacent to the adjacent neighbor. Laura is my next-door neighbor. You, you have to understand, when you live in a cul-de-sac, things are condensed, right? I mean, what happens to one property affects all six properties, and this was no different. Every couple of years, I get a knock on the door from a person I don't recognize who asks me to support them in their run for one of these seats, or that seat. And they always ask me the same question, "What are the issues in Pittsburgh that you think need to be addressed?" And I think it's a fair question. And I'm sort of of the, of the, of the position that, really, I don't have any issues with the city of Pittsburgh. You know, pick up the trash, plow the streets, put out the fires, and catch the bad guys. That's about it. That changed last year significantly, when, as Ms. Olson described, a non-resident basically swooped into the city of Pittsburgh and played Monopoly with our cul-de-sac. Purchased a property, not for their primary residence, but literally to generate revenue and income. Now, full disclosure, I have used, utilized Airbnbs, both here in the state and abroad. They can be lovely, used under the proper circumstances. This was not one of those circumstances, and quite frankly, I think the Airbnb model is being sort of bastardized by people who are using it to literally just pick up properties here, there, and everywhere, and generate revenue for themselves, and not be primary homeowners at the expense of homeowners such as ourselves. This was a property that was marketed as accommodating sixteen or more people. These individuals basically purchased a property, a four-bedroom, single-unit home, and turned it into a seven-bedroom motel. Probably one of the worst things that we'd have to experience is not knowing what we were going to experience from one weekend to the next. And coming home on a Friday afternoon and seeing a bank of cars in a small cul-de-sac, you're thinking, "Okay, who, who, who are these people, and what are they going to do for the next three days in our quiet cul-de-sac?" And this is, this is the situation that we constantly would live under. Most times, there weren't many issues, but sometimes, there were significant issues, and we brought them to the attention of our neighborhood association, and they acted very quickly. And I give a lot of credit to our neighborhood president, Michael Iarocito, and the officers of that association that, that took this to heart and realized that there was a problem, not just within our cul-de-sac, and not just within the neighborhood association, but within the city of Pittsburgh itself, and that this had to be addressed. So I think what we're seeing is, there are changing economies. We understand that Airbnbs are here to stay. We're not talking about an outright prohibition. We're talking about responsible permitting system, where everybody is accountable. The regulators and the regulated understand what the rules are, thank you, and all of us who are affected by the, by these types of properties also understand the rules. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I believe everyone else just has written comments. I have Connor Dugan from Pittsburgh registering in support, and I concur with Laura Dugan's comments. I have Jay Hockmeat registering in support. Please be sure the adopted ordinance does not prohibit neighbor associations from adopting deed covenants more restrictive than what this provides. Thank you. I have Georgia Asher from Pittsburgh registering in support. I have Michael Iarocito from Pittsburgh registering in support, and has some written comments for me to read.
Dear Mayor Richardson and Pittsburgh Alders, my name is Michael Iarocito. I live on five nine three two Schuman Drive in the Seminole Forest neighborhood. I'm also the president of Seminole Forest Neighborhood Association. I'm hoping to be here to speak in person, but I'm off town this week. I'd like to start out by saying I'm not, I am not anti-Airbnb. My family and I have used them in the past, we have traveled, and have had good experiences. There are places where they fit in perfectly and have good, responsible owners that are considerate to the neighborhoods where they operate. However, not all short-term rentals are equated, created equal. Unfortunately, our neighborhood experienced this firsthand. In March twenty nineteen, a large home in our neighborhood was sold to new owners. Within a few weeks, this property is being advertised as an Airbnb that could accommodate large groups that could sleep up to sixteen people, equivalent to four or five families. This property was owned several properties that these new owners used to run their business of short-term rentals. This was not their primary residence. Throughout the spring and summer last year, there was a revolving door of large groups of people renting this property. There are numerous large and noisy parties, along with heavy traffic, in and out of this cul-de-sac. It was once a quiet cul-de-sac, evolved into a circus-type atmosphere. I firmly believe that a large part of the problem was that this property was not the primary residence of the owners. As such, guests were coming and going as they pleased, without caring about the effects of the neighborhood of their weekly large parties. Since this was not their residence, seeing that the owners really did not care about the consequences of what was happening to their property. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated case. A simple Google search will yield numerous cases of short-term rentals, such as Airbnbs, causing headaches and conflicts with the existing neighborhood. This problem is not going away. Short-term rentals are a booming business globally, growing at an exponential rate. I know for a fact, other investors are looking to start up more Airbnbs here in Pittsburgh. When the Airbnb property in our neighborhood became a problem, our neighborhood association met with the neighbors that were most affected. We realized that the original neighborhood covenants were outdated and responded by taking on the arduous task of updating our neighborhood covenant. It wasn't easy, but currently, we have collected two hundred and sixty-five notarized signatures from Seminole Forest alone who agree that short-term rentals should be prohibited in the neighborhood. This concern is not just limited to a few angry neighbors, but rather, the majority of our neighborhood. I am sure that many other citizens, voters in Pittsburgh feel the same way. We realize that short-term rentals cannot be prohibited in Pittsburgh, but what we are looking for is that they be regulated. Short-term rentals should not be, should not run unaccounted for. Numerous cities are dealing with the same issue. Our neighbors in Madison, Wanakee, and Stone recently enacted regulations for short-term rentals. This Airbnb issue is simply not going to go away. I'd like to finish by, I'd really like to close by finishing with a quote from the great Benjamin Franklin. "Now, so prevention is worth a pound of cure." The city of Pittsburgh can choose to deal with this now head-on and prevent future problems, or can wait until this issue festers and becomes an even larger problem in the future. Thank you very much for listening. Sincerely, Michael Iarocito.
All right, I also have Karen Reed from Pittsburgh registering in support. And I have James Ziegers from Pittsburgh registering in support. Our support for this ordinance, creating and licensing and regulate, regulation from work, framework for short-term rentals, creating a penalty to cover include addressing parking. Thank you.
I also have Laura Cataldo from Pittsburgh, registering in support. As a homeowner and active citizen of Pittsburgh, for the last fifteen years, I would like to register support for the proposed short-term rental license and ordinance. It is important that the city of Pittsburgh have the authority to ensure that short-term rentals are operating within regulations that best serve the interests of the community and meet the license and revenue requirements already established by the state of Wisconsin.
Dear Mayor Richardson and members of the Pittsburgh City Council, thank you for bringing this ordinance relating to short-term rental licensing and regulation forward for consideration. I'm not sure I will be able to make it to the council meeting tonight, so I'm ready to have my support for this change right into the record. The first contact I received from constituents as a county board supervisor was about short-term rentals. What I, I'm sorry, this is from Andy Garmo, lives in Pittsburgh, also on the Dane County Board. The first contact I received from constituents as a county board supervisor was about short-term rentals. What I thought was an uncomplicated task turned into a labyrinth of interactions between various levels of government. I was lucky to have this conversation welcomed by the staff of Public Health Madison and Dane County. This is the body that issues tourist-rooming house licenses on behalf of the state of Wisconsin Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection. Many of the types of complaints that PHMDC receives are about issues that should be addressed by local municipal ordinance. They do their best to help the neighbors cope with violators, but they are limited in their ability to enforce. Having municipal ordinance on this issue helps provide some common sense regulations, so I'm pleased that Mayor Richardson has brought this before you today. My fiancee and I frequently use lodging marketplaces when we travel. We have stayed in Airbnbs in Baltimore, New Orleans, Los Angeles, and Denver. We like the experience of being hosted by someone in a home. Overall, it is a very different experience from staying in a hotel, and provides a different type of trip. In every city we've stayed in, there are some common sense restrictions allowing zoning, occupancy, residency, public health, and tax obligations for operators of the rentals. We rest well, knowing that there are some basic measures that are taken to ensure our safety in our host homes. Tourist-rooming houses offer travelers additional lodging options and alternative experience when they visit our city. As the marketplace shifts from traditional lodging to the shared economy, we should embrace this type of business venture that can be mutually, mutually beneficial to residents and visitors of Pittsburgh alike. I believe this ordinance is a balanced way to approach leveling the playing field between lodging marketplaces and traditional lodging, ensuring the safety and well-being of visitors to Pittsburgh, and supporting enterprising residents who will surely provide a welcoming place for travelers to our community. Thank you for bringing this forward and for your service to our, to our community. I hope you will vote yes in this ordinance amendment and Alder Aradafraada's proposed changes.
Excuse me for a second. All right, so, this is also Michael's, I printed it out twice. All right, so I think that's all I have for citizen comments at this point. I don't know if you want to go through this, Valerie, what you've added, or if you want comments. I know there's plenty of comments people have up here.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. So I've distributed two documents to you, all, they're the same document. One of them has highlighting and strike-through, and the other is the, well, so-called clean version. It's in track changes from our existing ordinances, and so, the text that you see in black is text that already exists in our ordinance codebook, and then, of course, everything in blue is new and added. The document that has highlighting shows you the changes from the version that's in your packet to the version that I believe Alder Aradafraada is going to move to amend the ordinance. Those amendments essentially, well, the proposed amendments will include the following things. One is a definition of a primary residence, and a definition of an operator. And it will clarify that operators can only be persons, not businesses. And it will require that operators can only essentially lease dwellings that are their primary residences. And that's aimed to restrict the kind of conduct that I think we heard a little bit about today, where people rent properties solely to be used as short-term rentals, rather than leasing out rooms, or even their whole home, a home that they live in. It's my understanding that Alder Aradafraada is going to make that recommendation. The one other thing that I would like to point out as well is that we learned that the county Madison, Dane County Public Health issues these licenses, and we've known that, we've learned that they're on a July first to June thirtieth fiscal year, and so their licenses are, their licenses expire on the thirtieth of June, and so the other change that you will see that's highlighted is that that change from December thirty-first is an expiration to June thirtieth. Just very briefly, I can tell you that I drafted this ordinance after consulting with staff to try to balance the needs of protecting the community, as well as the renters, but also to limit, to balance the needs of the city staff and in being able to actually enforce whatever licensing framework that we have. I know there may be some municipalities that have more involved regulations, but at this point, this is something that we came up with, that we thought that the staff could absorb without any additional staffing and any additional expense. It may very well be something that we might want to revisit in the future, but we believe that this is a good starting point, at least to get something in the books and, and see how that works out. The big thing that, that I will point out, and you probably have already seen this, because you've read the ordinance, is that it requires an annual inspection and an annual application for a new license every year. And so anybody who wants to rent out their home will have to conduct a building inspection with our building inspection department as part of the application process. They will have to show that they've received a Madison Dane County Public Health license as well. They will need to specify what their occupancy is going to be, and that's going to need to be consistent with our ordinances and state statutes. And they will need to pay the fee. So, I'm happy to answer questions, if there are any specific questions, and again, I think.
I think I'll go to Julia, just to.
Yeah, so, um, so what I am doing here, as in you explained very well, what I'm trying to do is, when I read the first ordinance, the original is, you know, and after reading all the Madison, Wanakee, and other municipality, and after receive, talking to the neighbors about that we need to have more, you know, and we need to specify, specify what are the primary residency, because I determined that maybe we need to add this language that is highlighted, because we are going to give it a peace of mind to the neighbors. If, in my case, I am renting, for example, my basement, and I live in the house. This is my primary residency. I am giving my neighbors a peace of mind, because I am doing an screening of the people that are bringing to my house. It's not like an empty house, vacant, okay? So, and I think adding this language, we are, we are going to cover some of the issues that, concern that the neighbor they have. And, you know, this is like the first step for this ordinance. Maybe we can start working on this and revise it in a couple, in one year, two years. We need to tweak some other stuff, a language, but at least we are giving the neighbor this peace of mind that, you know, as a city, we are being proactive with this issue. We are no anti, you know, short-term rental. I am no, because I, when I travel sometime, I use them. But what I'm trying to do, we give the, you know, to have some type of, you know, I don't know, it's not a legal framework, but it's some type of regulation, permit. We shouldn't call this like, like a fee, or we should call this a permit, more than a fee. This is another thing that I want to talk to you about that. We mentioned here this a hundred dollar, when we talk about the fee, I would call it a hundred dollar permit, you know what I mean? But, so that one is, what I want to add is a friendly amendment to the ordinance that we have on the table right now, and is add the language that is in yellow.
So you're moving to amend, then?
Yeah, I move to amend ordinance.
To reflect the changes in the.
To reflect the changes.
To reflect the change, yeah.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, same with Dan. Further discussion, Dorothy, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, the one big question that I have, um, because Dane County already does annual inspections and they have a big fee, um, is there a way that we could use and just tag onto the work that the county does? Rather than reinventing the wheel and making our inspection people follow on the heels of the county inspection people and get two inspections every year, as well as two sets of fees every year. The county fee, I've got it written down somewhere in my pile, um, is like five hundred and sixty dollars for the first year and a hundred and eighty every year after that, which, um, if you, it, it, I feel it as though forcing people through the same process effectively twice and making them pay for it twice, most of the people that are running Airbnb do it in good, responsible ways, and I do not want to overburden them. So I would love to find a way that they only have to have one inspection a year and pay maybe one big price for that inspection and a smaller price for the city following up on that and making sure that, um, that's happening.
Do you, Valerie, do you want to answer?
Yeah, absolutely. So I guess it's, it's really a policy question for this body, but I think if you want a building inspection from the city of Pittsburgh to go out on site and do an assessment and make sure that it's compliant, not only with whatever statewide code, but if there's any Pittsburgh-specific things, uh, that, that fee is really meant to recoup just the cost of doing those inspections. If the, if this body wants to not have that as part of the process, that's certainly something that we can take out. But, but then I think with the understanding that then building inspection is not going to be out there and doing annual inspections. So that's really just a policy consideration.
But the county would be doing an annual inspection.
I think the problem that, and I think you're absolutely right. I think the problem we might run into is that people come to the city asking for enforcement. And if our only response is talk to the county, which was what we've had in the past, when these problems arose in the neighborhood, our response was talk to the county. But then if the county isn't doing whatever it is that we think is enough of a response, or if for whatever reason their response is insufficient, then we don't have the same kind of toolbox. So we can absolutely, this body can decide and discuss and make a decision in terms of what level of involvement you want to have. This is just really a starting point.
I've got Janelle next.
Yeah, I've actually got some prepared comments, so this might be a good opportunity for a bathroom break. First, I want to thank Anne, the county supervisor, for the numerous calls that she had on this. We started working on this issue and it felt like it was the wild, wild west. We thought it was going to be straightforward and it was far from that. I want to thank the people who put this, this piece together. I've received several emails from around the city and was also involved with the Airbnb that you've heard of. Finding a solution for our neighbors without having something formal in place has been frustrating for everyone involved. This project had some language added earlier, so I'm just going to cover these key points to make sure that, um, I can share with you my experience with this. This should be consistent with what we've crafted in other communities in our area. Some aspects of this are currently regulated. So for example, we have laws around hot tubs and pools that are used publicly, including hotels. They're regulated at state level, and then they're inspected at a county level. When these things, when these items are presented as features in an Airbnb, they should be under the same inspection definitions, consequences, including the fine structure as a hotel. This protects the public. Because there are already laws in place and governing structures to determine inspections, et cetera, our language should align behind the state and county authorities in this area for a variety of reasons. We should, as we have, define residency. Our current language considers just over half of the year for this to be a permanent resident. We should also consider the number of guests, parking, and other elements that impact a neighborhood. If this is your home and these are your neighbors, you will treat and manage this decision differently than if it is for income only. We have heard from the residents via email and tonight's testimony the critical nature of these various neighborhoods and their frustration it caused for the people that live there. We also need to give city staff the authority to act when and where needed. Right now, we do not have that, in my opinion. Also, some neighbors want even more restriction. Restricted deed neighborhoods may have several areas that their requirements are more specific than the city's. I request that these neighborhoods have the ability to craft supplemental language that is attached to their deeds that meet their needs in this area. This has always been done with a majority vote in those neighborhoods to assure fairness and their governance process. Examples in the past have been not allowing cars and boats in the driveway for over twenty-four hours or disallowing external sheds. I encourage those neighbors to find a solution that layers on this decision and meets their needs with the understanding that the city does not have the, the reach to enforce their covenants. Typically, this is done with financial consequences attached to their deeds via their legislation. For example, the work that Seminole Forest is currently working through. This approach will give us the ability to meet the needs of all our neighbors at the city level while integrating into the other levels of government for legislation, structure, and enforcement. Finally, it gives those neighbors, neighborhoods who want additional requirements a structured mechanism to do so. We, my heart just goes out to these neighbors. I cannot, you know, Aaron and I sat down with Michael. I've spoken to the neighbors. It, it's just heartbreaking to think that if this was in my backyard, how I would feel. And so I'm grateful for the time that's been put in this to figure out how you say, this is my home. I live here. I want to open up a little bit of space. There's an opportunity for that, but it'll be respectful of your home and your neighbors because this is where you live. So that's my two, that's my piece.
Thank you. We've got Julia next, then Dan.
Yes, my response is, um, something that Dorothy mentioned. Why, uh, I think we, the city, we need to have some sort of, uh, you know, register about, um, who, how many are there, they need to register with that. We need to inspect them so we know how many are there, where they are, you know. So because right now, this not only happening, this issue in Seminole Forest, it happened in Irish Lane, it happened in Tower Hill, it happened in other part of the city. It's, this is, is, is expanding everywhere. So, and, and I think that as a city, we don't have a clue where all of these houses are. What are, you know, if they are, you know, if they are renting those houses and they supposed to be following the occupancy rate or no, you know. So there are a lot of things that I think I will feel more comfortable if the city do, does another inspection and we, they pay a fee, a hundred dollar fee or permit. So we know, um, where they are and who they are. Because right now, you know, we don't know. And, and, and I think if we, we need to cover some of the admin costs too. If we're going to do that, and if we charge this minimum fee of a hundred dollar, other municipality are charging three or four more times than we are charging. So, um, so at least we can recover, recuperate some of the admin cost in doing this. So, uh, this is my two cents.
All right, Dan.
Thank you to those of you who, I know, I think it was an issue with that last summer with the neighborhood meeting, uh, the Seminole Forest and Lacey Heights. So thanks to the, I know a lot of you have worked on this, a lot of you have. So thank you for all your work. I know you've been working on it for a while and diligently. I know I have one constituent here tonight who I ran into and, and had some concerns about Airbnb and wants to see some reasonable regulation. And so, um, the city, you know, the leadership here and the elders, I thank you all, um, for your work. I would ask the city attorney about those covenants. I just want to clarify, you, you, you're confident that we're not going to breach any covenants, the Lacey Heights situation and others, um, with this policy? Because it says, a couple of people brought that up.
So deed restrictions and covenants are private agreements that bind owners of land? This has really nothing to do with that. The city doesn't get involved in those. It's really just private matters between private landowners.
So they can still restrict them even further if they want to.
I would presume so. I guess I couldn't say that some creative lawyer might not argue that they shouldn't because the ordinance says something different, but that would be a very creative argument. It probably wouldn't go very far. That said, I'm not here to give advice to, uh, neighborhood associations. That wouldn't really be my place. I don't, I don't want to make it sound like that. But I will say that's really not at all what we're addressing here. We're not dealing with deed restrictions here at all. We're not either making them or preventing them from being made. This is just a licensing framework, the same way that you need a dog license or an alcohol license. This is just a short-term rooming house license.
Shannon, did you want to speak? I thought you maybe were saying, no, okay. All right, I've got Dorothy and then Janelle. Dorothy, go ahead.
In talking about the inspection process, I am not saying at all that we not do this, that we just point to the county and say, the county's supposed to take care of that. I'm fully in support of the vast majority of having this ordinance. What I would like to do though, rather than duplicating those efforts, is to make a partnership with the Dane County Madison Health Department that would it, that would give the city the authority to inspect or re-inspect and act on complaints. So that, again, I hate duplicating services. I hate making people pay for duplicated services. I think as, as long as we continue to have the authority to deal with whatever comes up, we can let the county do the inspections.
I've got Janelle.
Yeah, so I'm just going to take a moment and talk about the restricted deed component. Previously, I was president of the Lacey Heights Neighborhood Association. And so I'm familiar with the construct of those processes. And I would imagine they're pretty similar through the majority of the restricted deed neighborhoods. On the surface, it's quite straightforward. There are additional requirements that exist for those parcels, for those deeds. Those structures were established typically by either the builder or the board of directors. Each of those entities have their own board of directors. They may have some fees that are associated with it. They are responsible within the city construct for honoring and abiding by all the laws. But above and beyond that, there are certain expectations, um, from an architectural perspective for exterior buildings, for not having, you know, cars in the driveway for over twenty-four hours. And often enough, there can be consequences for not being in compliance. So they have their own way of not only regulating those additional expectations, but the consequences associated with them. And they are specific within their deed, within that area. They are voted on by the people that originally founded those, um, those neighborhoods. And then they are attached to the deed going forward. So, you know, as I take a look at our process, based on my understanding, what we're going to have is really a, a set of structure that addresses the entire city. And then if you happen to be within a restricted deed neighborhood and you want to add supplemental requirements under your deed restriction, that is up to you and your neighbors and the leadership of that community to make those decisions.
Before we continue, I know Doug Vagely is here from the county and I believe works with the, uh, short-term rentals. I don't know if you want to come up and say, speak to the county's perspective or anything like that quick. Also available for questions at all, but thank you for being here.
Great, uh, thank you, Mayor, and, uh, council members. Um, I am, my name is Doug Vagely. I'm the director of environmental health for, uh, Public Health Madison Dane County. Uh, we do the tourist rooming house licensing and inspections of, as an agent for the state, um, in Dane County. What we, uh, experienced earlier this year and I guess last year in, in Pittsburgh was really an inability for us to, um, help, um, the people that were experiencing the issues with the, um, the short-term rental. Because our scope of our regulations is purely health and safety. We don't look at anything in regards to zoning, to parking. We'll go and look at some building inspection items, but just to the extent of a carbon monoxide detector exiting, some locking, different things like that. Our program is completely paid for by our permit fees. That's why our fees are somewhat high. It is covering sixteen sanitarians that are covering, uh, Dane County. We're also restricted on how we can use those permit fees. And those permit fees can only be used for the licensed establishment program. They have to go right back into the program. So, well, it would be great, and, and I would love to do it. I think there's probably a way we could do it. There, we have a set of guidelines and regulations that we have to follow. And we would have to have some sort of MOU or M, uh, MOA with the city of Pittsburgh to be able to look at any zoning or building inspection issues. We don't have that authority, um, as you know, so. That, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, um, that, um, that we, our, our permit is different than, than what you're looking at, at here. And that's why our enforcement couldn't help, uh, in, in that situation, um, so.
Just one quick question for you, Doug. Would it be possible to at least coordinate when you do those inspections with our staff maybe? So that it's just kind of one time where your people, our people go at the same time? To make it maybe a little more convenient for the homeowner?
Yeah, we could certainly.
As much as possible.
Yeah, we could certainly try as much as possible. We schedule a, a pre-inspection, so that would be easy, uh, because that's a scheduled inspection. Our other inspections aren't normally, uh, scheduled, but that's something that we could work together with and, and do it that way.
That'd be nice.
Certainly.
Thank you. I've got Shannon next. All right, Dorothy.
Then, would it be possible to talk about a reduced fee on the county side to have Pittsburgh do complete inspection? That would include the things that you guys cover? And that would again be, the MOU would be in play?
I think I can probably answer that. I'm guessing that your, your authority comes from the state, correct?
Correct.
And you're designated as the agent of the state.
Correct. We have a contract with the state to provide the, the inspection services, licensing, uh, enforcement and everything in Dane County for all municipalities and towns and, uh, unincorporated areas.
Okay, yeah, one, one of the questions that I had on my sheet was what is the inspection process? And that would be the question from both sides. And it sounds like Pittsburgh would want a little bit closer look-see at what's going on than the county wants to do? Which is spooky in some ways.
Well, I think Pittsburgh, uh, building inspection would be looking at building inspection-specific issues above and beyond really basic life safety things and make sure that the property is in compliance. The county is really just looking at, I think, carbon monoxides and, you know, fire egress, right? Fire detectors, smoke detectors, things of that nature.
If we really got time.
Some of these questions were, um, already answered, but, uh, so who's monitoring, who's monitoring, monitoring this? You know, what costs, is that our building inspection people then? I mean, am I just clarifying this?
Well, they would, they'd be monitoring the, uh, building inspection issues. I mean, there's, there's other monitoring, uh, per se, if there would be a complaint for noise or things like that, that would be a police issue.
So... No matter how we look at this, it's going to put more on our staff. It's going to take time. It's going to pull, pull people away from other chores in the city. We're pretty light in the building inspection right now. Ask Tom about that one. And I have two Great Danes and chickens in my car, and I'm going to rent this home. I don't really care too much about the neighbors. Some people do, some people do. They, you know, what are we doing with animals? The fees are too low. The fees are too light. A hundred dollars to start with. I get, I can get that. Maybe it wakes some people up. That's probably their beer money. The fees are too light. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, the short term is 28 days? Or did I, I might not have that right, but what's the definition of short term?
Right. Under, under 28 days.
Boy.
28 days or 28.
I don't know about you. I'm, I'm not even shooting from the hip. I sure wouldn't want this next to my house. And I've been out here over 30 years. 28 days? That's a revolving door in my book. How about six months or a longer period of time? Now tell me that the ordinance in Sun Prairie has this, or McFarland has this. I don't care about that. I care about Fitchburg. I think our time period here is short. I think the people that worked on this deserve a lot of credit. It's a start. It's a start. I'm going to say that again. I, I wouldn't want this next to my house. Every month, somebody else could change? Somebody else could come in? I sure want about that. Mike talked to a couple of my neighbors out this, about this, that... I went to them at a wrong time because a plow went by and they were shoveling the driveway. And they were right with me. They said, "Tom, what are you guys thinking?" That we're going to, people are going to buy homes or do this in Fitchburg? And all of a sudden, after 28 days? I think it's way too short. Just, you know... And there's some people that run these. Don't tell me I already know. They run these pretty well. They buy the property. They keep it up. They take pride in it. Probably somebody people watching have, have these in other states or what. That's fine. I give them credit. We're talking about Fitchburg. We're talking about right here. We're talking about the city staff. Is there anything in here about animals? I didn't see any. I could have missed it. I don't think, so I own a home. And I'm going to rent it out for 28 days. They have two Great Danes and I'm going back to my ducks. Don't laugh too hard. My neighbors got ducks. I have a neighbor that has ducks in the backyard. I just think we need some more work on it. I think we've done a lot. Don't, don't misunderstand. I, Mayor, I, it was great we brought this forward. But I think it's, needs some tweaking.
Yeah, I think, you know, for the animals, there's other city ordinances that kind of relate to animals. And they would still fall under all those same ordinances. And then, you know, just to clarify that, so this is rentals under, less than 28 days. Most of these are actually one or two nights, a weekend type thing. So it's actually even more of a revolving door than what you're thinking. And we can't ban them unfortunately by state law. I know some people like that. We can't citywide. So this is like, almost like a hotel where they could every day, in theory, have someone new come through.
I'm a no.
But you can't ban them.
I'm a no. Put me down, no, right now. I mean, think about this, folks.
Tom, we can't prevent them. The problem is we can't ban them.
That's okay. I'm still a no. I mean, you know... You can't, some apartments you can't even get for a weekend. Are you with me? I mean, if I go to Nakoma Heights Apartments and tell them I want it for the weekend, they're going to say, "What? What are you, what are you in here for? Have you been drinking? I just want the weekend. I want Friday and I'm leaving on Monday." What? I'm not there. I'm totally not there. And I hear you, Mayor. No, I, I don't have to agree with this. And I'm going to go back to my statement. Dan bought a condo. Dan, Julia? I don't want to go any further. That's not fair. Do you want this next to you? I know I don't want to buy my, next to my house.
I think, Tom, though, I think you actually would want to support this because it's actually kind of regulating that. Because right now, there's no regulations and it's happening right now. And so this isn't saying allowing it. It's happening and we can't prevent it. It's putting restrictions on.
And if I say yes, Mayor, it's, it's kind of like, oh, this is okay. The ordinance is okay. Yes, I'm kind of for it. The general public that reads it says, "Well, Clotter voted for it." Janelle voted, whoever, whoever.
But I think voting against it means that you're okay with it as is and you, you don't want to provide some of these, kind of some, some teeth and restrictions on these. But that, that's fine. Yeah, that's, it's a complicated thing. All right, Julia.
No, I want to, to talk to you about your comments. It's like, we don't have anything now, okay? If you vote yes, you at least you're saying to the neighbors and to the residents of the city, we're putting a framework to, to have some sort of regulation. We cannot, as the mayor mentioned, we cannot ban this short term, you know? We cannot do that. But at least we are, we are giving the resident peace of mind that as a city, we are establishing or setting up this framework that, yes, it needs a lot of, we can add more stuff in the future if we want. But, you know, at, at least we are, you know, providing this peace of mind, you know? And that we don't have now and they are happening here. You cannot imagine how many of these we have in the city future. And we are going to have more. And especially when football season start and, you know, Epic Conference comes and you name it. And so we have to be prepared. That's it.
I have Shannon and Dan.
Wasn't it correct, though, that to, if you wanted more regulation in your neighborhood, you can do something through your neighborhood association, correct?
Only certain neighborhoods.
Only certain neighborhoods? So it's not?
Not through, not every neighborhood. Like, my neighborhood doesn't have any kind of covenants.
Just if you want like a little extra on top of this?
Yeah.
So if you have a neighborhood, yeah.
Covenants, yeah. Just certain.
Can I talk to that piece?
Uh, sure, Janelle.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges that you've got is if you are not currently in a restricted deed neighborhood, there's not a mechanism in place to do that. So you would need to change the construct of your neighborhood to be in fact restricted deed in order to add additional language to that deed to allow you to make those changes.
Uh, Dan?
So I, I just want to make the point that for Tom, just a, just a little history. Just, and some of the residents right here, they know this. I talked to Laura over the weekend, too. And so you got to understand that the state preempted communities, because think about the history. Five years ago or so, the started to crop up, this Airbnb concept. And so some communities, of course, then said, "Well, we don't like this activity." And so they did ban it. And then you had other interests out there that said, "Well, no, you know, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be able to ban it." And so then, as time went on, the state said, "Well," and there was a compromise that was had in the state legislature, "We'll allow communities to regulate them, and they can regulate them through various means, but you can't ban, prohibit this activity per state law." So if we did, we've been preempted from doing that. We don't have that ability right now. And so that's just where we're at. Now, I, I think, Tom, to your point, as we go for, you know, communities, as, as these things come up and you have regulation that's out there, you make adjustments. The councils, the elected officials, whoever, various committees respond to the interest and the needs and the, the requests of their citizenship. And so as time goes on, as that happens, you know, we can, we can make adjustments. You know, we, we have flexibility to do that, to introduce resolutions, things like that, to do this. But I think what, what the proponents, the mayor, the elders that have worked on this, have sought to do is put in some sort of regulatory framework for the time being. And we can put that in and then, you know, we'll have then some time to see how it goes. I think the summer will be interesting and like you said, football season, whatever. And that's great. And so, so that's where we'll be. And I think then we'll have some regulatory framework to, you know, and, and see if that, you know, improves the situation for those that have had experiences that are not savory. That's it.
Yeah, Tom.
I'm going to come back to you, Dan. With, and I wasn't on the committee and I, so... I'd be the first to tell you that I, the committee's work, I appreciate that. I wasn't there, so I got to give credit to the committee. How long did you work on it roughly? I mean, was it like six months or, you know?
There wasn't a committee, but I worked with Janelle and the neighborhood associations. It's been since September, probably. We're actually, well, over the summer, I got lots of comments. And we kind of looked into our options and kind of this came through out of that because of all the complaints and, and problems we were having, especially in one neighborhood. But there's another neighborhood, another resident, you know, around Irish Lane, that area. We gotten, I gotten some feedback from as well.
I mean, Dan, you work with a lot of the counties. You work with other cities, towns and villages throughout the state.
Sure.
You know, and... I'm sure with respect, you haven't seen everybody that's got covenants deep here on Alaska, up where you live or where you're from, around the state. You can go to, I can go to Wausau. I can go to Rylander. I can go to different, you know, what do they all have? I mean, are we... Are we too much in a hurry and not doing it right? And that's not the way it sounds. That's not the way it sounds. But are we too much trying just to get something out there, to get it out there? And yet it needs more to, fine tuning and it needs to be done. The 28 days really, I mean, this time period, I'm surprised that this hall isn't filled with people. That's a short period of time, you know, to turn around. But, you know, our... I'm not, I don't know. I'm just asking a question.
So, so can I?
Sure.
So, I'll let the mayor recognize me.
Thanks.
I don't want to make him mad.
I'll recognize you.
What I would say is this, so if you, you know, I've had some good conversations with the Wisconsin Realtors Association in terms of my, what I'm, what I'm doing on a regular basis. And, and what they have said is, is Lake Dalton has sort of a model ordinance that they recommend, a very good ordinance. And I have a lot of respect for the Wisconsin Realtors Association. I think they, they've, they've put together some very thoughtful policy on, on some of this. Of course, they represent a constituency like I do during the day and, and at night, when I'm here as well. And I think what I would say, Tom, is that, you know, it's hard for us to, to though, jump into that or, or to look at other cities ordinances and try to apply it to us, because each community is different. They're unique situations. So I think this was developed, you know, through Janelle and then Aaron, then Julia had some contributions. You had some residents who weighed in. I saw the email chain. And then they had some suggested language that they thought would help with their particular situation. So it was sort of organic, you know, like you see a lot of issues in the city. And, and I kind of recognize this is, is more and more people get engaged. They, there's an online petition now I heard tonight and, and various things like that. And so it sort of came together with the input of our constituents, our citizens, and then through some of your elected officials that are here. And, and I think that's great. But I don't know, I, I almost think if you take the, the Lake Dalton ordinance and maybe it worked fine here, maybe it wouldn't. Maybe our residents wouldn't be satisfied. I think as council members, we're looking for something that will appease our citizens and that they'll be satisfied and comfortable with, with what our policy is and, and the activity going on in the community. I don't know if or if not the Lake Dalton ordinance would do that. It might. But, but there's no way to know until we try something. And so I think what they put together is based on feedback, based on the activity that's been going on. You heard about over the summer. You and I talked about it a little bit. And I know you had a, a, a pretty active community meeting last summer. And so based on the feedback, they've tried to develop it that way. But I don't know if we can, you know, we could table it and wait 30 days, but I don't know that that'd be productive because you can make tweaks or anticipate things that you might come up with. But it's probably better just to implement this and, and see what's happening on the ground with feedback we're getting from the community. And, and the goal, of course, is to have peace of mind for our constituents. And so I think that's what this seeks to do. And, and like, like, like I, I mentioned before, if further issues come up, if there are additional needs, if there is consternation in the community, at that point, then we can revisit the issue.
Janelle?
I kind of want to echo what Dana said here. I mean, really what we're dealing with right now, and it has been the Wild West. We haven't had a framework, so to speak. One organization will do things one way, another will do another. We see components of this that may be regulated, like a pool, you know? And we've got an answer for that as it relates to currently how it's being handled at a state and a regional level and the, the testing that needs to happen there. But when we take a look at this whole market and the very different ways that each entity can have a presence from an Airbnb. It can be someone who's retired that just wants to rent a room every once in a while. It can be somebody else who winters in Florida and wants to rent out their place a month at a time. And so because of the, the broad nature of this, I think it's going to end up being an organic process. And I think we're going to need to start out with something that we think is good. And then we're probably going to need to learn and in a year from now, who's to say we're not going to need to pick it up and put some amendments on it. But I'd really like to see us put something in place. You know, I wish I would have had these answers to take to the neighbors this summer and tell them that we could help them and how we could help them and where the resources were and what we had our arms around. Because I think it would have given them assurances that they had support, even if we had some spaces that weren't perfect. I think that that would have given them peace of mind. But we, we didn't have much to give them this summer. And so I'd like to get, see something get put in place.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to add something that you say, that Janelle, when you say, "Who are the people that do this short term?" I want to tell you, I know people that come to the children's hospital here and it's cheaper for them to rent this type of short term than to pay hotels. And I know that. I know people that come to because we have great hospital here in Madison, but sometimes this family cannot afford hotel, but they can afford the short-term rental, you know? So that one, you know, not everyone that they are doing this, coming to, to this short term are bad people, you know what I mean? But, you know, so, and this is a, a trend that is coming, is a, is, is something that is disrupting the marketplace right now. You know, we need to accommodate as a city and take some, you know, measurement, how we are going to be proactive dealing with this issue. That's it.
Can I go to Dorothy quick and then she or is your hand, if that's all right? All right, Dorothy?
Okay, I was going to also mention people that are coming to work at Epic or hospitals or whatever on long-term contracts. Not, not employees, but they're going to be doing a special project for a number of months. They, they look for housing that's a little less expensive. Airbnb is a reasonable, not perfect, but a reasonable screening tool to help find people to... I, I know it's kind of a distant out thing and it doesn't apply because it'd be more than 28 days. But I've suggested in conversations with WIDA that it would be good if there was a screening tool for adults that want to age in place, that live in a house that's too big for them and they would like to find a roommate. Right now, if they, they, they can put an ad in Craigslist or whatever and see if they can find a roommate. But we know how much of a problem that can be. So Airbnb in some cases ends up being used as a screening tool for longer-term people as well. And that was one of my questions for either county or city is, in those kind of cases where people are only going to be over 28 days, do they have to register as well if they're using Airbnb for long-term?
No, these definitions come from state law and so it's under 29 days, so 28 days or less. Otherwise, at that point, you're just in a regular month-to-month rental agreement, I think. And that's not something the city does or could regulate. I mean, anybody who buys a home can choose to rent it in the absence, of course, of those private deed restrictions, as we discussed. And month-to-month rentals are...
And month-to-month rentals are fairly, well, I don't wanna say standard because generally speaking, you have a year lease, but certainly in law, the concept of month-to-month tenancy is presumed. And so, that's certainly something that could happen. It just wouldn't fall under short-term rental. At that point, it's just a month-to-month rental.
Okay. I think that's it for right now. Thanks.
All right, Tom.
Well, I can tell I can be misunderstood here. And I'm not trying to be. I'm not against the ordinance, of course. I'm not against it. You can twist my words however you want to, but I just said it. I'm not against it. I think that I'm just taking a step back and saying, okay, look, do we wanna work with Verona? Do we wanna work with Oregon? Do we wanna work with McFarland? Do we wanna work with another community and share the cost? Or share the, we do, we municipal aid, we have with fire, we have with police. We have with, going back a few years, when there was a disaster, I know for a fact that we sent our highway crew to another state to help them out. We did that because there was a disaster and they needed help. So, some of our highway crew went to another state. I'm just trying to say, folks, and I, I think you'll agree with me, I, I'm just looking for more teeth to the project. And it just seems weak to me. It just seems that I, I don't want this next to me. You might know my neighbors don't. And do we, can we work on this more and come up with something in the, in July? I'll say that again, can we work with another municipality? Oh, Dane County, you're sitting in front of me, what am I thinking? Do other communities work with other communities on some similar project like this?
All of the regulations that I've seen have been community by community. McFarland has their own, and I think their fee is around $500. Wanakee has their own, I think their fee is around $1,000.
First time?
Yes, sir. I think in some, some ways that that kind of stops the Airbnb from happening or the short-term rentals from happening.
Bingo. Thank you. $500?
Is not always the, what, what we'd need and the, and the marketplace would need and, and the lodging would need and everything.
Interesting comment. You said that's a starting point, or what does it go up to? Like, let's say there's three violations. Are you gonna tell me it's?
Those are.
$1,500?
So, the, these are not under my authority or purview. They're, I'm just saying that there are other, other ordinances that have been enacted in Dane County to deal with this situation where there was nothing before. And, and there are issues, and we were not able to address the issues based on the authority that we have with our regulations. We couldn't address some of the issues, and that's where an ordinance like this helps.
Tell me what else that another community that you know of is experienced, so it's Fitchburg's experience that comes to your mind that we're missing something. Tell me what I'm missing.
Madison, Wanakee, we've had problems in that community as well. We have had problems here in Fitchburg. We haven't had problems in McFarland. Quite frankly, we don't know where all these are either, so.
All right, anything further? All right, so first we have to vote on the amendment, which is the, oh, Dorothy?
I was gonna say the higher the burden it gets, the more likely that people are going to do it in the wilds, which kinda whatever, if, if you make it too hard to register to say you're gonna do this, especially if you're only going to use it for, and I, I added CrossFit to her list, I also added DNC, but that's a one-time thing. 10 isn't many times if you want to open your house for ballgames. Between CrossFit, Epic, and games, it's probably maybe 25 nights, I don't know. I didn't count. But I, I am worried about people flying under the radar and doing it anyway without registering. So, I'd like to encourage. Legal question for Valerie. On, on, I think the third page of the printout, top says section 10-284. And then down under D, it says shall include proof of a valid and current tourist rooming house license as required by state stats issued by the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection or an agent thereof. Would we be an agent thereof?
No, that would be Madison Dane County Public Health. They're the agent. That's what we were talking about before. They're an agent of the state.
Okay, that, that was one question that I had in here. The other thing that I wanted to say, and this is outside of, are, are we supposed to be discussing the amendment? Or are we supposed to be discussing the entire thing now?
I mean, the whole thing. It's all related.
Well, the, the one that I wanted under the procedure upon denial, that is 10-286. Both there and probably a little further along in the revocation process, I'd like to suggest that rather than go from staff denial straight to council, that it should go through public safety first, the same as we do for alcohol permits. That if people need to appear, they should appear before the Public Safety and Human Services Committee to make a recommendation to the full council. And if the full council wants to meet with the people, then that would be appropriate. But I don't think that it's quite appropriate, particularly for the denials, to make them come before the full council right off the bat.
It seems like it really comes to both, even for those. It goes to public safety. And here, it kinda gets referred to public safety. I would expect it to be referred to public safety for these as well.
But if public safety says, oh, they're okay.
Right, yeah, so it's referred them.
Then it comes here as more of a routine thing.
Yeah, I would expect it to follow that, a similar procedure.
Yeah, the, uh, public safety is jurisdiction per se on a, from a formality process over the building inspection department, so that would make sense.
Well, that, that, it's not outlined that way in here.
That's correct. It's not currently, so I think you'd need to make a motion to amend the ordinance. So, I'd suggest maybe voting on the existing motion and then maybe having another.
Have a second, yeah. That makes sense. All right, so we can do a second amendment for that piece. Janelle?
Valerie, just a quick question. I'm assuming based on the way the language is written, nothing in here would preclude the restricted deed neighborhoods from adding complimentary language, correct?
I wouldn't think so. But, but again, I just wanna stress that this, this isn't really meant to address restrictive deeds. It's not in place of it. But as you pointed out, there are a number of communities where that, or neighborhoods, I should say, that where restricted deeds are probably not a viable option because they weren't set up at the time of the plating.
So, this is gonna set a baseline if those restricted deed neighborhoods wanna do something to supplement this, that would be their decision?
Well, absolutely. It would, I, this is gonna set up baseline, a licensing baseline for the entire city. If there are any neighborhoods that wanna take on additional covenants, they can do that. But the city wouldn't, again, the city wouldn't get involved in it. We don't comment on it. We don't enforce them. That's another question that often comes up.
Yep.
I shouldn't say often, but it does from time to time. Couple times a year, somebody will call the city with a complaint about restrictive covenant. And the city doesn't enforce those. Those are private covenants that have to be enforced within the community that they apply to.
Thank you.
All right, are we done? Tom?
Pat, can we put? Just me, I wish I had more teeth, but if I do vote for it, can we have a six months, seven months, can we have a report on this back to the city council? In other words, to keep track of it?
Yeah, we can report on it whenever you wish, and this body can readdress it or amend it whenever you wish also.
I mean, I'd like to see what's going. Well, it falls through the cracks, is what I guess I'm saying. And I'd like to have, you know, to my knowledge, well, maybe the same committee will keep working on it, that's fine. But I guess I, I'd like to, maybe six months, have a review, what are the violations or whatever, something like that.
We, yeah, we can do that.
All right, yeah.
So, I just, before you guys proceed with your votes, I'd just like to point out two other things. One is, the very last thing that you see in the handout is the section 70-309, and it talks about the violation fees, so that is addressed within the ordinance. The reason I would point it out is that one of the biggest tools that I think we were lacking last summer was a way to cite people. Citing people is not my primary preference in addressing concerns, but unfortunately, sometimes there are situations where people just don't respond to the education piece and the, and, and the assistance and how to play by the rules, so to speak. So, this does give us some teeth in terms of people who don't wanna comply with the rules and don't wanna get some license, the licenses to issue citations. And the structure has an escalating scheme for, for those types of violations. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I, I just putting it out there, it's up to this body how you wanna address it. But given the proposed change to changing the license from running from July 1st to June 30th, this body can consider whether you want this ordinance to go into effect the day after it's published, as we do with most ordinances, or if you want to have it go into effect on July 1st. I think you could certainly put it in effect now. The reality is that my guess is the Airbnbs that are currently operating wouldn't be in compliance, and I wouldn't expect that we turn around and start writing tickets tomorrow. I think there'd be an educational piece first. So, but I think there, you know, some people may have concerns that if they wanna continue to operate between now and June 30th, that they would have to pay the $100 and then have to rein inspect again in July. So, I just wanted to mention it, how you want to address it. Once again, I'll leave that to you for the early policy questions, but I just wanted to raise that as.
Yeah, I guess I would recommend it starts July 1st, and they've got, you know, a few months to kinda get their permits and inspections and stuff like that. But that'd be my recommendation. People disagree. Dorothy?
I would put it into effect upon publication and not charge the fee for this year or do a prorated fee for this year.
It's up to you guys. Julia?
I think we're doing this, we should put it in place right after we vote. You know, maybe we can do some fee arrangement, you know? You know, but. I shouldn't wait.
As long as, as long as I brought it up and talking about the teeth, are you all satisfied with the violations, the cost there in reference to that? Or should that be higher? Just maybe not the first one, give people a little benefit. I get that, you know? But it seems like, where did this come from? 100, 200, 300, 400? That's 100 bucks a time. I mean, maybe it came from somewhere, I don't know. Shouldn't maybe the third and fourth one be lots steeper?
I'm not 100% sure, but I believe these don't include court costs, so I think the actual citation ends up being higher. But as far as where it came from, I just, honestly, I just made it up. I, I looked at some of our other offenses and ordinances, and I looked at a couple other things that have escalating structures like that, where it's the first offense within a year is a certain amount, and then second offense within a year is higher. And so, I just based it on that. That's, again, that's, that is entirely up to this body to, to set those penalties. But I, I tried to keep them consistent with the other fines that we have.
I mean, I mean, I, one and two, so you're talking 100, 200, see, I'd go 400 and 600. I'd jump it up there. Just to try and, you heard what the county individuals said around really high fees. Uh, let's start a little slow. You know, the 100, 200, and then go 400, 600. I jumped it on purpose to keep people in compliance.
Tom, the other thing I wanna mention to you is that I did include language in this ordinance that says that each day of a violation continues or occurs as a separate offense. So, I, I think that whatever the fee fine is, I think we're probably in, in good standing to start issuing those tickets. So, in other words, if somebody continues to rent, we can write, if they rent for three days, in theory, we can be writing three tickets. Whether or not those tickets will be written that way, that'll be up to building inspection when they're writing them. But at least we have that for really egregious offenses. For each day of the offense, we can write those. So, but, but again, I'll defer to this body, whatever fines you want to include.
Julie, did you, are you good?
No, I was, I was, one another question is what happened in the fifth offense? Can we revoke the license forever or for a period of time?
I think this, the body can revoke. That's correct. I mean, their, their revocation process is really outlined in.
Where is?
10-288.
288? Oh, okay.
All right, Janelle?
I just kinda wanted to play out the math. So, for discussion's sake, let's say somebody's had four days in a row of violations, that in that particular scenario, they would be seeing charges, charges of approximately $1,000.
Potentially.
Okay.
All right, should we vote on the First Amendment? And then I think there's maybe one or two other ones that people wanna add as well. I don't see anything else. So, this is voting just on the amendment and on the whole thing to what Julia has here outlined in blue, which adds the primary residence, the June 30th is kind of the start, the fee schedule or the, yeah, fines, violations, so. All in favor of approving this amendment, say aye.
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 Any opposed, Nate? And that passes. All right, Julie, do you wanna, or Dorothy, do you wanna add your?
Sure.
Another friendly or non-friendly amendment?
Yeah, so I would move in section 286, under procedure upon denial, paragraph to strike counsel in two different places and change that to Public Safety and Human Services Committee. And at the end of that, to add on, refer to counsel for final determination.
Is there a second to that?
And similarly, under the revocation section, that would be paragraph D, upon approval from the city administrator hearing scheduled before Public Safety and Human Services Committee. And then in E, Public Safety and Human Services Committee, conduct hearing. All other interested parties may also give to Public Sa, so that, that's another change to Public Safety and Human Services. Written decision of Public Safety and Human Services will be made and referred to common counsel for final determination and provided to the operator.
If I just may suggest that only one written decision be issued, just from a process standpoint? I think the, the Human Services Commission can make a recommendation if the council is going to make the ultimate determination. I think that way, there's only one written order.
Okay.
And so, throw out the document, having it go to public safety first instead of the council.
And then with the referral to common counsel for final determination. Is that, is that your intent, Dorothy?
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that, yeah.
Somebody in? Any further discussion? Any further discussion on that amendment at all? Oh, hour and a half is enough for you to talk about this? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, any final changes at all? Seeing nothing else, let's actually vote on the whole thing. So, as amended, if you are in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, and this passes, thank you. And kind of the second piece to this is F, which is the fee schedule. If someone would like to make a motion for F, that'd be great. Is there a second to? All right, so we talked about the fees, it's in your packet, it's a hundred dollars. If anything else you want to talk about?
Yeah, I'll tell you, I'll take Julia's, what was it, the fifth time the, it's revoked? Or what did you say?
I think she wanted to suspend their license.
Or suspend the license? If it's.
Yeah, that's in the ordinance piece.
That one is the.
Yeah, so this is just updating the fee schedule. So this, so updating the fees for the license itself. That's in the ordinance, and so, yeah, that's in there.
It's in there?
I think that's in there, yeah. Yeah, Valerie said, the fifth time. Yep. Yeah, so this is, we're just kind of verifying those fees. All right, seeing nothing else on the fee piece to it. All in favor of approving the updated fee schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that also passes. All right, now going back up to Parks Commission, Sarah.
For Parks Commission, our next meeting is this Thursday, February sixth. As a reminder, we will be discussing the Burnwood Park Shelter and swallow mitigation.
All right, Library?
The next meeting for the Library Board will be on February nineteenth at five thirty at the Library.
All right, Commission Agent Mall, Dorothy?
I'm just going to pass.
All right, RCC?
We met this, we met yesterday. As a call out, we are offering a rain garden workshop on February twenty-ninth at the Fitchburg Senior Center from eight thirty to eleven thirty. It's ten dollars a person, but an individual can learn how to install a rain garden and help protect our lakes, rivers and streams. In addition, April, or this April twenty-second is the fiftieth Earth Day anniversary. And so we're trying to schedule several Earth Day events. We've already set our recycling day event for April eighteenth from eight AM to eleven AM for shredding and electronics recycling. And we're also pending, or we're also working to schedule a waterway cleanup. So if you're interested, please look for that.
All right, transportation transit? All right, how about Seda? Got a resolution on here as well?
I move approval of resolution R dash two one zero dash nineteen, approving the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two venture debt funding participation agreement between the Madison Development Corporation and the City of Fitchburg.
All right, is there a second? All right, say anybody in? Did Seda approve?
Yeah, we approved.
All right, did Finance approve?
And I would like to call Mike Zimmerman to the. So you can explain, Mike, what is this?
He wants you to explain, Mike.
You are here, so.
Come on up. He didn't wait through that hour and a half, Airbnb short-term rental thing for nothing.
If we're going to pay him, he's going to earn it.
Mike Zimmerman, Pittsburgh Economic Development Director. And this is just a renewal of the contract that we have with the Madison Development Corporation for the venture debt program. This is one of the few things that we have in our economic development toolkit to work with small businesses in particular. We started this agreement in two thousand and four, and it's been kind of a rolling three-year agreement as they've added different participants and different banks that are part of the capital stack that we can access here. We've been very successful with this. We've worked with, I think, five different companies. We had one that didn't work out. We did take a loss on that, but that was offset by dividends that we got from an equity investment from the larger pool of capital through the venture debt program. But it's something that is attractive to our science and tech companies specifically. We've got one of our young companies right now that's working with Madison Development Corporation to look at accessing the program. And the companies that have utilized it before, it usually results in additional job creation and also them taking additional space in some of our new venture center and other types of tech buildings in the City of Fitchburg. It's a loan program, so it's, it's not a grant, it's a loan. They pay it back and they pay prime plus, plus two at least for it. And the other benefit of this program is it allows us to leverage our dollars to access a larger pool of capital from the regional banks, companies like Madison Gas and Electric. Some of our local banks are also in the consortium, including Park and Oak Bank that work with some of the prospects here. And the other benefit of it is that they have a financial underwriting committee that does that. And they also have a, a science and tech advisory board that vets the intellectual property to know if either the science or the IT that is the IP that this particular company is, is proposing as part of their business concept is, is valid and viable there. So it's been a really good partnership for us going forward. Dan Hardy from Seda actually sits on the loan review committee. And they only tap into the Fitchburg money when it's a Fitchburg company as well.
And I believe you told me that as well, this was urgently funded through a TID, and we do not put any taxpayer dollars into this going forward.
It was not general revenue fund. It was capitalized through tax increment district number three, which is over by the Fitchburg Business Park and Oak Bank. A very successful TID that closed out, I think, within ten years.
Yeah, so there's nothing ongoing. Any questions or comments at all? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Thanks, everybody, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Julia for Seda?
We have the presentation from COPA, you know, that we did the night before here. And then we went through the hotel room tax reports and some updating developments. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs?
No report.
All right, EMS?
I had a great report, but I think Tom took it out of my binder, so I'll have to do it next month.
All right, sounds good. Bicycle Committee? Julia, Bicycle Committee?
We, we have no meet, I don't know when is the next one, is in a quarter, in three months from now?
Coming up soon, I thought, yeah.
No, we had one.
Oh, you just had one, okay.
And today we had a meeting in the morning for the subcommittee to prepare for the, how to become a goal community. So we are working on that, so, yeah.
All right, Tree Advisory?
No report.
All right, Landmarks? All right, Finance, Tom?
The Finance for paying bills, these bills, review of all checks issued one twenty, one fifty-six through one twenty, two fifty-one. These are dated one one twenty through one fifteen twenty. The total is one million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. The next one is resolution, it's, it's in a resolution ordinance, resolution, it's our zero one twenty, a resolution authorizing payment to Dane County for monthly court assessments. It passed Finance and it's, I move it. Really is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say anybody in? Yeah, go ahead.
It's really passing on the money that we owe Dane County in reference to the court system.
Great. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that one passes.
The next one was resolution, it's our two dash twenty, resolution authorizing payment to the State of Wisconsin for monthly court assessments, I'll move it.
Second.
All right, did Finance approve?
No, we're paying the State of Wisconsin same thing.
All right, and it passed Finance too.
And it passed Finance.
All right, annual thing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, yeah, that was an aye. That was unanimous, aye. Just someone asleep at the wheel.
The next one is resolution, it's our twelve twenty authorization to proceed with the replacement of a fire department squad. And I'll move it.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and did?
Chief will give us a few comments on it.
Did you approve in Finance?
Yeah, we did.
All right, yeah. Chief?
Hello, this is the, the twenty-year-old Fire Department Squad. This is the vehicle that responds to our technical rescue. Like I said, it's, it's in, in line for replacement. We had a commit, committee established once this was established in the CIP. And the committee was basically given two instructions, keep it within budget and only, only provide what the city actually needed. So we did a, an audit of the services that we provide along with the, the equipment that's typically used for things like auto extrication and, and other technical rescue responses. And what they were able to come up with was a, a bid that was six hundred and nine thousand dollars. In addition to that, as typical with these projects, if we provide the one hundred percent payment, we get a discount for that, which saves us about twenty-two thousand dollars and change. So what we're able to do is actually push forward a, a budget of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And, and, well, five hundred and eighty-seven, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, to be exact. What this does is it allows us to utilize existing equipment, things that are already being used on the squad, to be able to refurbish things that are in need of replacement, things like hoses, wiring harnesses, those types of things. And it allows us to reuse things like the, the power block on, on the squad. So a responsible effort on the part of the, the squad committee, bringing this forward and presenting the council with something that basically saved us to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars if we were to purchase something brand new.
Questions at all? People like saving money, that's good. All right, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number D? The letter D?
Does somebody else want to jump in here? Okay.
We'll move resolution R fifteen. Oh, you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, our resolution, R fifteen dash twenty, resolution authorizing the OneNEC data center services agreement.
Is there a second?
Second, and we passed it.
All right, so Finance approved it. That's something we talked about during budget season with the additional hacking that's going on and vulnerabilities. OneNEC has given us kind of a pretty good deal, saves us a lot of time and keeps us kind of with the most up-to-date security that we can get. Further questions at all? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right, that passes. Enough, we already did. Personnel Committee?
Oh, we are meeting February nineteen.
All right, Public Safety? All right, Mayor's Report, just a couple of real quick things. The first, I know all of you kind of got the email. Tom Darcy unfortunately passed away earlier this week. When I first started on Parks Commission, you know, about fifteen years ago, he was actually the council rep on Parks, provided great service to the city, great guy. And just our condolences to him and his family. He's been battling illness for quite a while, and unfortunately, he lost that battle. Another couple of things, on April twenty-sixth is going to be the pancake breakfast for the senior center. So if you want to put that on your calendars, that is coming up in April. And then just one of the things I want to make sure you saw on the referral is we are recommending to lower the speed limit on Sine Road and McCoy Road. I know that that is something that people in that area are going to be very happy about. Hopefully, next meeting, we're also going to refer out reducing the speed limit on part of Sentinel Highway, which is another road that people are very concerned about as well. So look for that. I think it's something that's going to be very popular in your, with your neighbors and your residents. So you might want to let them know that's coming, but it's, you know, trying to make those roads safer. And that is all I have for now. Janelle, Aldo report at all?
None.
All right, Tom?
Road Crew, great job on removing the snow. I've got a number of people telling me about it, so.
Thank you. Sarah? Dan?
I would comment, Tom Darcy was from District Two and really great guy, represented, it was the old District Two. It wasn't the current boundaries, the boundaries have since changed since he represented it. But did a great job and I know he was a good friend of Tom's and yours. And I knew him well and his family, my condolences, and we will miss him.
Julia?
I want to, I don't know, you have seen that, that there is a house in the empty lot before the house, the house explode. There is a house is coming there, it's good because it was an empty lot for two year, more than two years. So I was surprised to see it, so, you know, so that one, I want to mention that.
That's good to see. All right, Ann? Dorothy?
I'd like to point out to pretty much everybody that the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative grant program is open right now. It will be up to five grants, up to ten thousand dollars each to do projects that benefit the neighborhoods in the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. One group that I've been talking about wants to take the kids that are having issues with stealing cars and stuff and do a mentoring program with them that would include, for each of them, membership at Planet Fitness, so that we could, for, for ten bucks a month, these kids can go and work off their energy and spend time doing productive stuff instead of hanging out on whatever, doing their, they're doing. But if, if anybody's working with any nonprofits that want to think about what might, we might be able to use some of this money for, I'd really love that to go to really, really good purposes.
All right, thank you. Julia?
Because people are asking, there was a death on the, one of the bike paths. Do you know any more about what happened? It was.
I, I think I would defer to the police chief on that.
Okay.
It, it was announced in the newspaper. And, but I would defer to the police chief for any additional explanation.
Sounds like they're not concerned about a threat to.
No, there's no threat to the community. But the, the cause of death, I, I don't believe it went public, so.
Oh, because people, you know, I know that it, it doesn't mention, so people are asking what happened. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. I understand.
All right, moving forward, unfinished business. First thing is, we had that question a couple of weeks ago on why this claim was on here. It shouldn't have been, but because we postponed it, we just need to table indefinitely tonight. It is getting paid and should not have been on here. So that, because we table it, we have, or postponed it, we have to bring it back. If someone would like to table indefinitely, that'd be great.
I would move that.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of tabling indefinitely, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, and then updated comprehensive plan, just a couple of things. Make sure to get in your comments to staff on any things that you want to change. On February fourth, they are going to post online along with your comments as well. And on February eleventh, one thing I've asked to put on the agenda is kind of a, an additional opportunity for people to, in the public, to come in and speak, a public hearing, if you will. We'll have one on March tenth as well, public hearing. But want to provide another opportunity for people to come in, as well as on the website, on the comprehensive update page, you will find that there is an email address you can send something into if you want to mail any comments in, just providing as many opportunities as possible for people to provide feedback on that. So a few things coming up as we go forward here. New business, a direct referral, if someone would like to move this, that'd be great. That's something we do every year.
I move donations.
All right, say anyone in, all in favor of approving resolution R twenty-two twenty, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, that is approved. Next meeting is in a couple of weeks, February eleventh. Meeting the whole is February twenty-sixth. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.